Well, convene the April 21st meeting of the planning board. I mean, agenda tonight is the stormwater management permit hearing for Summit Partners. And continuation of the public hearings for 133 Essex and Board Business. So we'll do a roll call vote first. So, Richard, Richard Boroff here. Bill?
Bill Wheaton, present.
Beth?
Beth Hare here.
Arnie?
Arnie Couch, present.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor, present.
Amal?
Amal Dahlquist, present.
Pat Norton?
Pat Norton, present.
Cory?
Cory Boy, present.
And Rick Mitchell, present. Okay, so first order of business is to welcome Beth Herr. She's just been recently elected to the board. Beth, if you could take yourself off mute and maybe just introduce yourself. Quick one-minute background, how long you've been in Hamilton, why you joined the board.
Thanks so much, and yes, I'm excited. I really wanted to get back to the community. I've lived here since the early 90s, so for over 30 years. And it just seemed like a place that I wanted to serve. So I'm excited. I used to be in compliance in the securities industry years ago. So hopefully that will help me in reading the regulations and the different things that we have to deal with. But I'm looking forward to looking to many of you who have gone before me to give me guidance and wisdom. I'm excited about this opportunity.
Very good, and thanks for joining. Just an up quick update, Cory Baloo was approved by the Select Board to serve as an associate. Just so you know, Cory was on the board but chose not to run, and you actually filled his position. But for continuity purposes, we asked him if he would continue as an associate. Because four of the board members have missed one meeting. And if they miss one more, then they wouldn't be able to vote. So we needed to make sure we had at least seven people available, should that be necessary. So I want to move on to an Ask the Boards forbearance and see if we can take sort of one item of Board Business first. Move on to the stormwater permit. And then, because typically at the point of when somebody is elected, the board discusses the board formation and its organization and its leadership. And so I wanted to bring that up, because on an annual basis, the board gets a chance to talk about where it wants to go and whom it wants to go with. So I'll open that up. If somebody has an idea that they'd like to serve as chair, that would be fine. So that's open for discussion, or any other Board Business that people would like to discuss.
Patrick, would it be within the board's purview to postpone this discussion until after the decision about 133 Essex? I should certainly think we shouldn't change captains if that was the desire of the board in midstream on an important application, was that?
I think that's entirely within the prerogative of the board to do that, if it wishes to do so.
Okay.
Should that be a motion, Patrick?
I would suggest that it be a motion.
Okay, so then what would the elements of the motion need to be? That the current chair be retained as chair until the 133 Essex project is completed?
You could either do it that way, or you could vote him as chair. And then after that project review has been completed, that we could have another election for board members.
Okay, then I'm going to make a motion to continue Rick Mitchell as chair through the completion of the 133 Essex Street project.
I would second that.
Okay, and just so everybody understands, I definitely want to see a new board chair after 133 Essex, because this has been quite the undertaking and trial for the last nine, 10 months. So, all right, so there's a motion on the, that's been seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to amend the motion. It's a friendly amendment to include one other name to be part of the selection for the chair going forward. The name being Marnie Couch Crouch.
I don't think there's anything in the amendment, in the, in the vote that precludes other people from
Yeah.
signing on in, or you know
Excuse me, the motion that was made was to appoint Rick as the chairman going forward.
Through, through the end of 133 Essex and then to revisit the chair.
To revisit it, yeah.
Correct, revisit the chair is okay to, I, I would like to keep it open as to who will be chair at the end of that time.
Yeah. I think that motion makes that point fine.
What I just said, Bill, or is that what you're
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, I'm not hearing it, I'm not hearing it.
I second that motion.
Okay, hold on a second, Beth?
Yeah, so I just, because I'm new to this, what are we looking at for timeline on that? Is that like three months, or is that potentially a year?
Oh God, no, God, no, 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 no.
I don't want to scare you, but I'm just trying to understand what that might look like.
No, I think we, we should be finished with this by early June at the latest. We've, we started back really in beginning, the middle of last June. This is probably going to be, there'll probably be one or maybe two more public sessions where the applicant's going to be presenting information. And then the board will vote to close the hearing. And then the board will convene among itself and discuss the project. And then we have findings and conditions, and then decide if the board wants to approve this project. So hopefully by early June, we're done with this.
And then, I just have a question on the friendly amendment, what, I'm trying to understand what that was.
The, the friendly amendment was to include one other name if today is the voting day for chairman.
Well, we're not, I think you're really kind of confusing this, Amal, because we're just, we're, we're trying to either confirm or not the current chair. And then at, the motion is at the time that this 133 Essex ends and I step down, then the board can have a discussion as to who it wants as
Okay, so the motion is to approve you, Rick, until the conclusion of the 133 Essex Street? And then
Correct.
Another vote.
Correct.
So we'd have to either vote that up or down.
I'm sorry, Bill, I mean, Amal?
That, we'd have to either vote that up or down, that particular motion.
You're muted.
No.
Sorry there, yes, that's correct. All right, so, I'm sorry. So I'd like to take the roll call vote on the motion that was made by Richard Boroff and seconded by Bill Wheaton. So, roll call vote, Richard Boroff? You're muted, Richard. You're still muted, Richard.
I did, I did, Richard Boroff, aye.
Okay, Bill Wheaton?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Amal?
Amal Dahlquist, no.
Okay, Beth Herr?
I'm sorry, did, Amal, I didn't hear what just happened, I think I lost.
He voted no.
No.
Um, I just, I feel a little like new on this, so I'm not really sure which way to go. I think I'm just going to vote no.
Okay, Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor, no.
Okay, and Marnie Crouch?
Marnie Crouch, no.
Okay, so, and I'm going to abstain because I'm not, no. Vote for myself, so the motion fails to pass. So then we need to take a vote on the, who will be the next chair?
If, if we're going to do that, I would like to take a moment and express the qualifications, I think, of the person that should be chair. Because first of all, I think you are an excellent chair, Rick, and I wish you were continuing. Would that, would you folks mind if I do that?
It's open to discussion, just don't take too long.
Well, I wouldn't, okay, I think whoever is chair needs to use Rick as their whatever, and image that they should follow, they should be open-minded. They should be willing to work with all other members of the committee. They should not be prejudiced against any of the other members of the committee. And should be willing to listen to opinions of the committee completely and openly, and not try to push their opinions because they think they know more than anybody else. And I realize that is a very strong statement, but I think it's a necessary statement to make.
Okay, so we need to have somebody make a motion on appointing the next board chair.
Well, I'll move that Marnie Crouch be nominated for the chair on the planning board.
I'll second that. Second.
Second by Richard Poor, okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Marnie Crouch?
I would abstain, as I'm the potential candidate.
Okay, we ask if Marnie feels she can meet the conditions that I put forth?
Absolutely, Richard. I absolut, I absolutely can meet those conditions.
Okay, I will hold you to that.
Please do.
Yeah, I will, you have my guarantee.
Okay, all right, we're, we're going to commence voting here, and Marnie has abstained, Bill Wheaton?
Aye.
Okay, Amal?
Amal Dahlquist, aye.
Beth Herr?
Beth Herr, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor, aye.
And Richard Boroff?
Richard Boroff, aye.
And Rick Mitchell, aye. Did I miss anybody?
Isn't, is Patrick part of this at this point?
No. That's still an associate.
Okay, so then, okay.
So the board has voted, and, and did I get your vote, Richard? I don't think, you voted yes?
Yes, yes and yes.
So it's unanimous, Marnie, you are now board chair.
Well, I, I thank the board members for their support, and I particularly thank you, Rick, for voting for me. I, I respect your service on the planning board for all these years, and I thank you for that service, and I, and I mean that sincerely. So we should go forward with the business, but I want to indicate that I hope to work collegially with every single one of you and get your input with respect to a lot of the decisions that we have to make. Not just with respect to this 133 Essex project, but for the other matters that come before the board. So wish me luck, and let's proceed with this agenda so that it might not last until 11:00 PM, as Patrick noted in his Zoom meeting. So if we can finish before then, that would be wonderful, so.
Marnie, Marnie, could I interject that the other officer as part of the planning board is the clerk position, which you've matriculated from? So let me put that before the board for consideration for nominations and a vote.
Does Marnie need to nominate that person, or can any board member nominate that person?
Anyone can, Jonathan.
Okay, I nominate Emile Dahlquist as clerk?
I second that motion.
Okay, Marnie, go for it.
Yes, any discussion with respect to Emile's candidacy for clerk?
Emile, are you willing to accept this?
I'm willing to accept, yes.
Okay.
Marnie, what, what does that include?
The clerk would step in to serve as chair in the event that the chair was unable to attend a meeting. And as clerk, I, I paid particular attention to the minutes. But the clerk is sometimes referred to as a vice chair, so it's, it's, it's an important position in that, that that person has to be prepared to fill the role of clerk in the event that, I, I'm sorry, chair, in the event the chair is absent. So we'll have a roll call vote with respect to Emile's nomination as clerk. So we'll start with Jonathan.
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Bill Wheaton?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Beth Herr?
Beth Herr, aye.
Richard Boroff?
Richard Boroff, aye.
Rick Mitchell?
Aye.
And Marnie Crouch, aye, so I believe that's unanimous. So at this junction now, we can turn to the stormwater management special permit. And it's my understanding that the applicant intends to withdraw this permit. Is John Murphy here?
He is not here, Marnie. He had a conflict for the, the evening, but he did transmit a request, a courtesy request that his application be withdrawn. I will note for the board and for the public that he has submitted a plan for the Lot 1 property, which illustrates on a drawing as prepared and submitted and certified by a professional engineer that it's less than the threshold required for a stormwater management permit application. That threshold size is one acre. They intend to, and will make sure that they disturb less than that quantity of, of property. So I'm recommending to the board that it be removed. And I have notified the building commissioner to make sure that if and when a building permit application comes to the town for that property, that this plan be utilized and that orange fencing be provided in the areas that protect those quantities of property that are to be undisturbed. And therefore keeping the size of it less than the threshold amount.
So just so I'm clear on what you're saying, Patrick, are you indicating that the stormwater management system that the applicant submitted and that was peer reviewed by Watson and Sampson will be put in place regardless of whether or not we are required to approve a special permit applic, I mean, a stormwater management application?
No, I did not make that commitment on his behalf. I did make the commitment that the geometry and the plan that he has submitted to the town is what we will enforce.
May I interject here for a second?
Yes.
I have inspected the property at length, and the property has cleared much more land than is indicated on the plan as land not to be disturbed. In particular, all along Bridge Street, the land has been cleared right down to the road. And the plan shows a 20-foot buffer. And I think Emile also had questions about whether or not the calculation of the one acre do not disturb is in fact already invalid, that he's already exceeded that. And so I would not want at this point to accept his withdrawal without having, without having a surveyor assess based on what has been done as opposed to what is proposed.
The important consideration here, Bill, is that we're looking simply at Lot 1. We're not looking any further than that specific property.
I have inspected Lot 1 carefully, and all along Bridge Street, on Lot 1, the clearing extends all the way to the road. As opposed to, if you look at the plan, it says the do not disturb line is 20 feet back from the road. So that's roughly, you know, 20 feet by 200 feet, it's probably several thousand square feet that is already cleared, which he indicated that he wouldn't clear.
Can I add to that, that in, in a way that might clarify the question?
Okay.
I think what's a little confusing when you look at the plan is there's edge of pavement line, which is very faint and hard to find. And then there's the property line, which is set well back from the edge of pavement. And so, so a question actually for the board is if an applicant clears what's essentially town land, which is the last bit between the property line and the edge of asphalt, how does that fit into the calculations of triggering or not triggering a stormwater management special permit? So, and what's interesting about this plan is it does show the line of disturbance going out to the edge of asphalt on Miles River Road, but then it vignettes out and stops at the property line on Bridge Street. So it's more, I think, a question for the town and the board to look at, to understand the relationship between what's in the property lines and what that margin of, of, of land is between the property line and the edge of pavement, which is actually town property.
My understanding is that Anna Butter, who's not able to be at this meeting, requested that the applicant's survey be essentially peer reviewed. And given Bill's comments and Jonathan's comments, I, I don't think that's a bad idea at all. Particularly as my recollection is that Mr. Murphy did indicate that he had cleared more than one acre at a prior meeting on, on the application of his limited liability company. So Patrick, would it be possible for you to engage Watson and Sampson to address Jonathan's question and also to essentially double-check that the, the applicant has not disturbed less than an acre? So that he is in fact able to properly withdraw his application? And if this were done quickly, I think that it would prejudice him unduly. Is that feasible, Patrick? Did you read it?
Let me, let me make the board and the public aware that of how the peer process, review process works. When an active application is before the town that we have funds from the applicant, that's applied specifically to that review. That set of funds has already been spent. There's no longer any funding within that, you know, pocket of funds that has been used on the board review. The reporting that had taken place had been submitted and presented to the board previously. So, you know, that, that's not something we have available to us.
Would the DPW be in a position to take a, a look at this and, and report back? Particularly with respect to Jonathan's question? And also if they have the applicable boundaries of Zero Bridge Street, they could evaluate and ascertain whether Bill Wheaton's observations are in fact correct or, or whether there may have been, you know, some error with respect to the actual precise delineation of Latin. I'm not suggesting that you're wrong, Bill, but I, I'm trying to really see if we can find a way of satisfying your concern as well as the concern of the butters. Is, is there, is that feasible at all, Patrick?
I do not believe so, and let me point out, and Jonathan makes a very good point, that, you know, the frontage onto town property is in fact town land. That is not part of the application, it's not part of the review process. That's not part of the calculation sets and the reviews that happens to come as part of the, the process that we undertake. I can work with DPW to attempt to calculate, but I will tell you, we do ha, have no surveyor on town staff. We don't have the ability to do it with the level of precision that we'd like to. Again, you know, in my estimation, the fact that this has been certified by a professional engineer, they are not going to be put in their professional registration in jeopardy with erroneous calculations, which are very easily undertaken. So I, I am respectfully requesting that we allow Mr. Murphy to retract his application.
I would agree with Patrick in his analysis of, of kind of the professional ethics and standards that surveyors have to hold to. My question is really apart from that, and it's not challenging area calculations. It's really just, again, an internal clarification for the board on this project and any other project that might relate to this kind of calculation of, again, specifically looking at this drawing, they've shown what looks like part of the calculation going out, out of bounds into town, town property on the Miles River, but not onto Bridge Street, you know, one being the curb cut and one not being the curb cut. So the question is, you know, did they include the curb cut as part of their calculations? And Miles, the Bridge Street frontage not, you know, and, and how would that be worked? How would that be looked on and, and what would be the policy in the future for other projects? In other words, what's the relationship of, of the curb cut and passing through town property and level of disturbance? So it's more of a policy question for understanding future applications.
Let me point out that DPW does have what's known as a curb opening permit process, which every property that is developed and has a new access onto a public way, like Bridge Street or Miles River Road, they must get a permit through DPW in order to undertake that. So, you know, that would be part of the process.
Well, under all these circumstances, if there's no, no funding available to actually assess the, the reliability of the survey, I, I think that the board should entertain a motion to permit the applicant to withdraw its application. I, I am concerned, given the, the letters written by the butters as well as their presentations or their arguments at prior hearings, that the runoff from this property is, is severe. And I worry that if the stormwater management does not adhere to the state standards, that there could be problems down the road. If that were to be the case, Patrick, how, how would the town address those issues if in fact there is no approved application?
I think that the town Uh, I think that the town. Has a number of locations where we have some. Uh, slopes like we do uh, on this subject property. That are fairly near to public roadways. Uh, this one, you know, I think in my opinion. Uh, would be a very good location for the town to create some structured drainage to be able to receive. Uh, the precipitation runoff, so it stays there. Uh, and is assembled and then uh, taken out at some other location. Uh, to the Miles River and in an attempt to try to. Uh, not affect negatively the private properties which are on the downslope. And on the north side of Bridge Street. That's, you know, what I, I would recommend to DPW and have. About a year now.
Well, I, I would continue, I, I continue to urge them to do that. And I will just suggest that, uh, given the circumstances with respect to this application. It may be something that the board could consider in the future to um, recommend that the town amend. Uh, its stormwater bylaw to reduce the size of the lot subject to a stormwater management. Application if the lot. Although less than one acre has steep slopes that have the potential to cause erosion. And obviously there are some lots that are much bigger, but because they're flatter. A stormwater management system may, may not even be required, so we might in the future want to consider. Amending that bylaw and our regulations to, to be more site specific to address issues. Partnered individual properties, but particularly to address uh, development on um. Properties that are, are steep like the ones on Bridge Street. So with that.
Go ahead, Marnie.
No, I'm finished, Richard. What would you like to say?
Go, uh, given. The kind of thing that Marnie's suggesting, uh, mending the bylaw, that has to go to town meeting, does it not?
Yes, exactly. It's something that we would consider as a board uh, several months from now. Um, with a review of any other, um, you know, applicable bylaws and regulations. It's obviously not going to have any effect on this project at all.
No, I know it would not be retroactive, absolutely.
But given the nature of this lot. Um, you know, it might be that we would want to um, consider a, a smaller acre, uh, smaller um, sized lots if they're. Uh, particularly steep. So with that said, I, I will entertain a motion to uh, permit um. Mr. Murphy and his limited liability company to withdraw his application if anyone were to make such a motion.
So moved.
Wait, 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 so moved is not a good motion. Uh, because I'm not sure what we're doing. Uh, you need to actually verbalize the complete motion, please.
Mr. Murphy has requested that the board permit him to withdraw his stormwater management application. And Rick has moved to authorize him to do that.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Uh, Bill?
Uh, I'm in favor.
Uh, Rick?
I.
Emile?
Hi.
Beth?
Am I allowed to vote? Is this a new?
Actually.
You are allowed.
She is allowed?
Yes.
Oh, Patrick, I would, I would recommend. Where Beth didn't, was not here for the previous hearings on this matter, that perhaps just somebody who's participated.
Okay.
All abstain.
Okay.
Or not vote.
Jonathan, I.
Um. Marnie, uh, Richard, did I call on you?
No.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, I.
And I think under these circumstances, I might have to find Pat Norton, wherever he might be. I don't see him.
I got him on my screen.
Hey, Marty.
Uh, yes.
Pat Norton, I.
Okay, and Marnie Crouch, I, so it's unanimous. And Patrick, you can advise uh, Mr. Murphy and his limited liability company that his uh, application uh, can be withdrawn. So the next item on our agenda is um. The special.
Just sorry, before you move on there, can I also just ask um, Patrick to transmit um, just notice of the withdrawal to the town clerk as well?
I'm sorry, Robin, I didn't quite understand what you said.
I was just um, asking if Patrick Raffit can just let the town clerk know that the matter's withdrawn as well.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you.
Sorry, I didn't unmute fast enough. Sorry to interrupt.
Who, who's that that's talking, Marnie?
Pardon me?
Who is talking? Who's the lady?
Uh, Attorney, yeah, Robin Stein, town council.
Okay, I don't, because I don't see her on my screen, that's why I'm asking.
Uh, so the next item on our agenda are, are continued hearings on the special permit for the project colloquially known as one thirty-three Essex. And its associated stormwater management system. And so at this um. Point, I will um, ask Jill Mann to begin her presentation, and it's my understanding that we're going to be considering. Uh, a number of related topics all um, uh, associated with the, the construction. How, how construction will be managed at the site. So uh, um, Ms. Mann, if you are available. I don't see you on my screen, but I'm sure you're here.
I'm here. First, I'd like to welcome Beth Herr. Thank you um, for participating in the board. Look forward to working with you in the future. And congratulations, Ms. Crouch, on your new um, chairperson role. Um, look forward to wrapping up this hearing with you. Um, so this evening, we are going.
Thank you, Jill. I appreciate it.
Very, very welcome. Um, so this evening, we are going to walk through our construction management plan, because I know there's been a lot of concern about, okay, how are you going to manage the process? So we are going to do that, and in fact. Um, if I name Ms. Crouch, would it be okay if Brent Cole, our engineer, shared his screen? Because what I did was I just prepared a PowerPoint that just goes through what we had sent so that we can, my team can be organized in this presentation to this board.
Uh, yes.
So Brent, if you would.
Madam Chair, could, could you request that I be made a host?
Uh, yes, please. Um. Patrick, could you uh, assist with that?
Our able technical assistant, Megan Carroll, has hereafter made you host.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Brent. Um, so what I've done is I just, we had discussed briefly the um, schematics of some of the buildings. And we had indicated that there were different color options. So what I had done was I just had the architect show you different color options, so that, that's on the side of the screen um, when I begin the presentation. So essentially, um, you know, this, this entire presentation is going to review the updated plans, because I think the board's going to be very happy with a couple of changes that we made. Um, we're going to show a general overview of the area of disturbance, uh, because that's important for when we discuss the, the construction elements. I have an updated spreadsheet for you estimating the ledge removal, because we keep tweaking the site plans to basically bring down the impacts and bring down the amount of export. Um, we're going to review that phase A and B. Now, this is A and B for construction, not for unit sales. And then we're going to review the draft SWIP, which is the storm water prevention, pollution prevention plan. That makes sure during construction, we, we keep our project tight and that we do not contribute to um, a disbalance in the groundwater. And then we're going to talk about the construction management plans and noise and dust control mitigation. If you can flip for me, Brent. Um, so as always, just a very brief presentation of the team, and I think Ms. Herr will appreciate it, because I know she is not familiar. And then there are a couple of new additions to our team that the board will be hearing from this evening. So clearly, it's Larry Smith and Julia Dickinson from Capitol Hill, I'm Chabaco Capitol Hill Partners, um, who's the project proponent. Um, Brent Cole from Grant Engineering, the civil engineer. Uh, Maine Drilling and Blast, it's Matthew Shaughnessy this evening, will be representing that group. Um, and then we also brought the general contractor, because he's the person that is going to be overseeing the construction of the site. And that's Onyx Corporation and John Durkin. I, Jill Mann, in the Land Use Council. And then the landowner who always is attending in these particular calls is Kathy Dival and Brian Rich. Um, can you go to the next? And again, I just have the colors of the buildings. If anybody wants to see more, I think I emailed the PDF. Um, so I'm going to start, but then I'm going to turn it over to Brent. So what we're really excited about is, is the whole purpose of um, the senior housing bylaw in cluster developments in open space is to bring. Um, units together and to make sure you cluster them to eliminate, you know, uh, too much roadway, you know, to basically concentrate. And then to have the buffers be provided along all of the um, perimeter areas, which as you can see, we have done. You know, you can run along Essex Street, you can run down along the Vandy property, you can run behind the Dolan property, and then you can go all the way to Chabaco Woods. And then all the way over, and you can see the broad um, amount of protected buffer that can never be used. But what we also did that I think the board will be happy with is, if I may, Brent, can you just show where we had relocated that unit so that we removed it? So where you see Brent's hand right now, there had been a unit, and that was in proximity to some of the wetlands on that side. And by doing so, we actually dramatically reduced the amount of cutting and the amount of ledge removal, which will be reflected on that um, sheet that you will see. So um, basically. Oh, I. I, I'm sorry, I thought somebody was talking. Um, and, and you will see that in, in that sheet as well. Um, which allowed us to really pull back um, the ledge removal i- i- along those buffer areas, even in further enlarging our buffer.
Attorney Mann, thi- this is now a forty-nine unit proposal?
Nope, it's still fifty. What we did was we added a small unit. So we relocated, that was a large unit. So what we did, Mr. Wheaton, was we moved it to the other side and made it a small unit. Um, which, you know, uh, as we all know, we're in a tremendous housing shortage. I mean, it, it, it seems crazy, right? Which is why prices are going through the roof. So the more, the more that um, the lack of, lack of supply is creating tremendous, tremendous, tremendous disparity in pricing, and that's what we're seeing, right? Um, that's why Governor Baker's screaming for, for housing production. Um, so we did just shift it, and we heard from the board, and I, I, I can't remember if it was from you, Mr. Wheaton, or one of the other members. Look, can you make some more smaller units? So we actually did that. Um, and Mr. Cole will be going through that with you. So at this point, unless somebody has a question about something I said, if it pleases the chair, I'd like to turn it over to Brent Cole.
Yes, please.
Here you go, Brent.
Good evening, Board. My name is Brent Cole, we're Grant Engineering. Last week, we submitted updated site plans, um, and our attempt is to reduce more impervious area and introduce more low-impact development features on site. I'm actually going to shift over to. Uh, our latest master plan. So as, as Jill talked about, we did move unit number thirty-one, or former unit number thirty-one. To create a duplex with unit number six. Uh, this created many advantages for us. It reduced the amount of blasting, it reduced the amount of earth disturbance, it enhanced the buffer along this side. It also created a medium-sized unit as well as a small unit with six and seven. It also reduced the amount of impervious area that was, that was out on the development. So there's a lot of advantages by moving unit number thirty-one. You may also notice that we reduced the size of the driveways. Uh, especially when they intersect with the roadway. You'll see in through here that we brought the driveway down to your typical twelve feet. And then as you get closer to the garage, they fan out, which is very typical for a normal driveway. This also helps reduce the amount of impervious on site. One big advantage we did was we found driveways that could be porous. Pavers. Um, so at the last hearing, it was introduced to you guys that the driveways out here would be a paver material, which is going to look just fantastic. What we were able to do was make some of the driveways porous pavers. Which is great for treating stormwater and introducing more infiltration into the project. Those porous pavers are units two, three, four, five, thirty-three, thirty-two, and unit twenty-four. Similarly, we used a porous or a permeable pavement material along parts of the cul-de-sac. Again, you, you may not actually notice the difference, but the cul-de-sac will allow infiltration, it allows stormwater treatment. And in doing so, we, we moved the parking spaces over here as well. So that the cul-de-sac in these parking spaces could be that porous or permeable material. The last thing we did was we introduced an electric vehicle charging station to the parking area out near Chabaco Road. Each unit will be set up with an electric vehicle charging in the garage. So we thought it was fitting to add one to the parking area. I'm going to switch back to the slideshow. We, we wanted to show you guys an aerial of, of the overall project. And, and in reality, we want to show it to you because of how little disturbance there really is out here, specifically on the sixty-six acres that we have. We are, we are.
That's not worth anything, so.
And, and now we are left with five acres of actual impervious, with the remaining land being either a porous material or landscaping. The next slide is the spreadsheet that uh, Mrs. Mann discussed, and I'm actually going to switch over to John Durkin. Um, who is the contractor, and he can explain the, uh, the amount of material and the amount of truck that we are expecting.
Before you do, before you do that, can you enlarge this screen, because these numbers are so, uh, there we go. Thank you.
Yeah.
You see that now? Good evening, Board. My name is uh, John Durkin. I'm uh, principal at Onyx Corporation. We're of Acton, Massachusetts. Uh, we specialize in um, heavy civil site contracts like this that involve rock export, drilling, blasting, rock crushing. And uh, we have a longstanding relationship with Matt Shaughnessy and his team at uh, Maine Drilling and Blasting, and have performed some pretty complex projects together, so. Um, we've been discussing this project with Larry uh, recently, and I believe that uh. The information that has been provided before, uh, we've reviewed this table and uh, have kind of vetted out these quantities that are being reflected here. Uh, we did a takeoff in Carlson, which is a software program that calculates our cut fills and our trench rock. Uh, total ledge cut. And how much rock we can use on site as backfill. And uh, we've gone through this table and uh, we added, you may notice that there is a column. Um, at the bottom here that says swell due to removal of unprocessed ledge. And we wanted to bring this before the board, just to um. Be as straightforward as we can, because the uh, the project involves loading out a uh, larger quantity of ledge. Uh, to be sent out of town and not be uh, crushed on site to try to prevent uh, you know, too much dust. You know, noise that we hopefully don't have to expose the neighbors to. Um, and basically just would involve loading and, and hauling away the, the rock unprocessed. Um, the rock, after it's blasted, has a large void space in it. So uh, there's swell, and that's the term we use, and uh, that's what that column is there. You actually have about twenty thousand yards of swell if the material is unprocessed. Um. To export it off the site, so. Uh, if you look at our surplus material totals, uh, at the bottom, it rolls up to about a hundred thousand cubic yards that has to leave. And uh, I backed into with Jill Mann and her team. Uh, the uh, trucking loads here at twenty-eight yards per load, and that's the average industry for a dump trailer. And uh, days to export, we have seventy-eight days of uh, exporting to get to grade. And we're going to keep a large amount of the rock on site. Um, and we're going to process it and reuse it on the site to hopefully limit what we needed to export. So, um, any questions on this table that you guys see?
Um, Mr. Durkin, did you? I'm sorry. Was someone else speaking? Was someone else speaking?
Marty, I think you need to ask people to put themselves on mute.
Thank you, Rick. Um, would anybody who's not um, a- a- actively involved in this good discussion put themselves on mute? There'll be an opportunity. There'll be an opportunity for the public to ask questions, but until that time, it would be helpful because at times I've had difficulty hearing people. So, Mr. Durkin, did you actually prepare this doc, document using software? Is that correct?
We checked the quantities. This was prepared in collaboration, this document between Granite Engineering, Onyx and the developer. The, you know, bottom of the screen reflects some of the design changes. And Brent, maybe you want to speak to that, but we got reduced, you know, thirteen thousand four hundred yards to the relocation of the, the building that Brent was speaking about earlier. We've increased the ledge that we're going to use on site for a slope redesign that's incorporated in the latest drawings. Surplus material totals have been decreased by about nine hundred yards. And the trucking loads have been decreased by five hundred eighty-nine truck trips. So.
I guess my question was, was there a prior version of this chart so that we can compare the two? Or, or should we just accept these numbers as given? Because we've never, we've never seen this type of chart before. So we're seeing decreases, but, but we don't have the baseline from which to determine how, how this all unfolded. Do you follow me?
Brent, maybe.
Do we need that?
Well, it's just, it would just be interesting.
Well, yeah, but we don't really need it. We can really sort of calculate it just by adding the nine hundred cubic yards back. I don't see the problem.
I, I don't believe there is a problem. My question was whether this had ever been done before.
I remember, I seem to recall numbers for truckloads that ranged from one thousand to ten thousand. So in, in casual conversation, so it's actually thirty-six hundred over eighty days. So that's about fifty truckloads a day for each of those seventy-eight days, give or take a little. Is that correct, Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
I'm understanding this right, right?
Yeah, I have forty-five to fifty as an average. Yep.
Okay.
So that's about a truck, you know, roughly every nine to ten minutes.
Right.
So if.
It may be easier if, if we were to present the, the whole presentation and then, and then we can come back and go through specific questions. Are you okay if I continue and, and go through our entire presentation tonight? Or would you like to segment it out into individual sections?
Unless any board member has an objection, I do not have an objection.
I have.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer that so that you guys, if you had any trouble reading it or understanding, I could clarify as you.
Now, now that it's in front of us, I would just like, how many, when you say trench blasts, so that's the number of blast events?
Uh, no, that's the cubic yards of rock.
How many, how many, how many blast blasts, you know, explosions will there be in the project? Get this much, you know, rock work. I understand you may not quite know that, but what's your best estimate?
I don't, I don't know how to answer that accurately at this time. We have to go through the process of a blast design with Maine Drilling and Blasting. So it really comes down to beginning the, beginning the blasting work. And they usually begin small and check vibration levels. And then they base their production off of what kind of results come from the, from the work. So I've, I've seen some projects go extremely productively and fast and others take a very long time with very small blasts. I think it's going to be probably not established until the first blast goes off to see how we're doing.
You didn't even have a, you mean, you're, you're removing that much material, but you don't, you don't know whether that's going to be one thousand, two thousand, or ten thousand blasts?
Referring to the trench rock, I don't. Referring to the open rock, you know, we've, we've got a production rate here of, of roughly, you know, seventy-eight days to export off the project. We probably have a, a doubling of that for blast days. So I believe, Matt, and you guys, I'm going to defer to Matt for a quick moment. Matt, you don't have a duration here that's been submitted to the board yet, do you?
I don't think we've submitted any durations. I am stepping in here. This is my first time. Just introduced myself on that Shaughnessy. I'm with Maine Drilling and Blasting. I am the divisional superintendent. So my manager had been speaking to these, to, to the board and participating in these meetings up to this point. So I don't, I know we have a duration. I just can't speak to that right now at this point. But I did just send a message to see if I can get that info. And as soon as I get that info back, I will be happy to share that with you guys. Okay, thank you.
If I remember correctly, I think the number was, was talking about two blasts a day?
Yeah, that's correct. We, we, we would like to, in order to get through this as quickly as possible for everybody involved, we would ask for two blast windows per day. That's typical. You know, and if it gets to a point where we can incorporate that amount of work into one slightly larger blast per day, and that would obviously afford the project to move forward at, at the same pace and cause less interruption in the workforce as well as less annoyance, if you will, to the surrounding neighbors, then we would prefer to do that. But.
So what happens? Do you, you go with your two? And then you sort of, you find out how much disturbance there is in terms of vibration law, transmission, so on and so forth. And then if it's lower than a certain level, you can then combine it into one blast?
Yeah, essentially, it becomes about, it's, it's similar to a bell curve. So we're going to start out slow, small, conservative with a test blast. And then we're going to record that and, and analyze that data transmitted, you know, that we capture from that event. And then from there, we're going to, you know, progress and, and and try to be as productive as possible while staying within regulations and, and make sure that, you know, everything is safe. And we move forward in a productive manner. And then, you know, as the project tails off, there tends to be some smaller ancillary blasts that are required to do some cleanup in smaller sections. So.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Sorry, I just refer back to my notes. I had eighty, eighty-one days of blasting for phase one as an estimate.
Right. So we estimated the number of blast days based on, you know, good circumstances. And that's what's in that blast plan. But what Matt, I think is, so it isn't ten thousand blasts. It's probably, you know, anywhere between, you know, a hundred and twenty and a hundred and seventy blasts for total. And the reason why Matt is trying to explain it in more detail is because he wants everybody to understand there's a testing process because you want to see how the material falls off, right, Matt? So you want to make sure it's a slow process because that's the whole control blasting and why we hired Maine, Maine Drilling and Blasting because they are exceptionally professional and will take their time to make sure they, they see what the environment is and how to capture that. So to Mr. Norton's point, you know, we're anticipating somewhere, let's just say about a hundred and sixty blasts because it is about two a day. Am I correct, Matt?
Yes, absolutely. Hundred percent.
Let me ask you, you don't blast while you remove? I mean, you sort of, you do all your blasting, then all you're removing, or you do a little blasting, a little removing interspersed? What's the kind of like pattern?
So it is a concurrent operation. While we are blasting, material will be removed. It's an ongoing process.
Okay, okay. Not sequential.
But by ongoing, you've been ongoing in one day or ongoing in the whole period? I'm not sure.
When we start blasting, they're going to be removing material, processing, and we're going to blast along with that. It's a series of events. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Over a period of time.
And a lot of these questions relative to staging in the, 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 the interrelationship between blasting and site work is going to be discussed in phases A, B later on in the presentation. It'll make it much, much more clear, Mr. Boroff and Ms. Crouch and Ms. Norton. I think that you'll see that, you know, they're going to go through that entire process for you and show you how they're going to do it.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
We should probably move on from this. And if maybe, if any board members have further questions, we can come back to it.
And if I could add, please, this is Larry Smith, part of the development team. The blast plan has all that information that was submitted some time ago. And that was, that blast plan was reviewed by the town peer reviewer, who had minimal comments. And that's where the eighty-one days came from, from, for Pat, from Pat Morton to just reference that. Thank you.
Great. I think I'll, I'll continue it. The, I think it makes sense to, since we're talking about trucks and, and loading, I think it makes sense to talk about the haul route before we get into the construction management plan. And if you see this aerial map on my screen, John intends to use Bentley Warren Trucking for trucking purposes. And, and what you see here is, is the route that will be taken from one thirty-three Essex to the Bentley Warren Trucking site. So if you, if you take a left out of our site onto Chabaco, you come to the intersection of Essex and Chabaco. From there, you, you continue north on Route twenty-two. And at the intersection of Sagamore and twenty-two, you cut over through to Route one A. You continue north on one A to the intersection of one thirty-three and one A and take one thirty-three all the way to Route one where Bentley Warren Trucking is located. So it's not a very large route. It's, it's pretty quick and main roads. And it is taking a left out of our site to get to Essex as quick as possible. So getting into the construction management plans, I believe these were introduced to you at the last hearing that I was involved with. John and I worked together to put these plans before you. And they kind of give you an oversight of how the construction will be laid out from first day to Phase A and then Phase B, which will be the entire Phase One of the project, which is the initial phase that, that will be intended for construction. This first sheet here is our, our mobilization plan. So what you will see is a, a blue access road that we will use to get into the site. The, the site will have all original practices implemented before getting in. And, and John will build this access road off of Chabaco to get to this green area, which is the stockpile loadout area. This area is a fill, so John will have to bring it up to grade. And while they're bringing it up to grade, the clearing of the purple area will be able to take place. John, do you want to talk any, any more specifics about that initial day and, and what you're expecting out here?
Sure. So I've visited the site, very familiar with the terrain. There's power lines there. There's a lot of trees right along the end of the road. And we've come up with this plan that this blue location here is the most conducive location to access a site from. And our first day would consist of dropping a single excavator off. And a couple of, of tree clearing fellows would have to cut some of the small brush right off the edge of the road. And I think in short order, probably not more than about fifteen to twenty minutes, we could have our excavator off the road and into the project. We would intend to have a police detail there for that first day to gain access. And then any subsequent days where there's major deliveries of equipment in the early parts of the project, if we intend to block the road for any period of time, more than, you know, maybe five minutes, we would call for a police detail to be there to assist us. It is a small road. We don't think there's any issue with getting down the road with the equipment that we're looking to do the, to perform the site work with. And our plan would be to dump a few loads of stone at the edge of the street there and get a rough construction entrance built right where Brent is showing you guys. And from that point, we would work our way up the hill weaving between the larger trees. And we'd have to be moving a few of the superficial boulders that are on top of the ground out of the way with the equipment to kind of get a, what I would call a goat path up and over the rock face to gain access to the green area that's shown there. After that process is done, we would probably bring in a second excavator. And we would walk that up the goat path, which would have a hammer on it. And we'd remove any kind of dangerous terrain that possibly isn't excavatable with the first machine that came in to get access for other equipment to come into the site to clear the trees that Brent was describing to be cleared out in the back piece here that's shown in purple. And subsequently begin to clear the trees heading back towards Chabaco Road. All the trees in the front would be pulled backwards into the project. Because until we've really established a nice access roadway, which might involve a little bit of hammering to shape it to get log trucks and things in there, the, the, the tree debris needs to be pulled back into the project to be later processed once that access road is established. So that pretty much describes, I believe, this, this first screen. Anything else, Brent, you want to touch on here?
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's worth noting that, that this access road is put in place so that no queuing or staging on Chabaco will, will essentially occur. It also should be noted that all of this work is, is completed within the confines of our limits of disturbance. We're not going within any wetland buffers. We're not going outside of any of the areas that we've already limited for disturbance of the project. So moving on to Phase A of the project construction site, you'll see a little bit more color and the focus area is really up front. This portion is, this Phase A is really to excavate material for stockpiling and the material that's going to be moved off-site. If you notice here in orange, that's the area that John anticipates that is enough material that he's going to need to take off-site. Where the area in yellow is the area that he'd like to retain and stockpile for use on-site. That green area that was indicated on that first plan remains the same. That area will be continued to be brought, brought up to grade as John continues to stockpile material and, and load out from the site. The construction road has shifted from that goat path that, that John mentioned to a fully established temporary construction road. You will notice that queuing of trucks can be established along this road for eight trucks. There will be temporary sediment basins put in place so that John's following his SWIP permit with the EPA. And that all leads to that stockpile area that John will be managing. One color that was introduced here is, is red and that area is for the muck pile management area. I believe this was talked at length at the last hearing. And it was implemented by your peer reviewer, GZA, and worked with GEI to make sure that there's a proper muck management plan. John is aware of that plan. He was fairly instrumental in, in helping develop that as well. So I think you'll find that this portion will, will go smoothly. And it was instrumented or is put in place by your peer reviewer. John, is there anything on this plan you want to add?
Uh, no, I think you covered it pretty well. I mean, once this yellow piece is established, we can drive trucks into the site and turn them around in the site and drive them out. So there's no backing in off the road. There's no, you know, getting turned around. The idea of this, at this point, is we blasted from the green line heading towards Chabaco Road. The rock is being pulled towards the green stockpile area as it's blasted in the first phase here, in the first section here, Phase A. And that way, by the time we reach Chabaco Road, everything on the backside has been brought to subgrade, which would allow the trucks to easily come in and out by the, by the design of this road here. We also added, there's a couple of, of things there. There's a, a truck management office trailer shown there. Typical operations by Onyx involves a foreman and site superintendent. Truck rules will be established there where trucks are instructed if they've never been to the site before. And they'll have to sign a form that they received the instructions with truck route, hours of operation, and how they reach someone at the site if they have a question. We do not want trucks getting lost in the neighborhoods and we'll. We do not want trucks getting lost, uh, in the neighborhoods and we'll, we'll ensure that that does not happen. Um, also, uh, there's also a dumpster location there that we've added. So that, uh, we can manage, uh, small amounts of trash and things like that from the site. And, uh, we also have a temporary sedimentation basin formed there. Because the, the location of this road is through the, uh, final design retention pond. So I think this will give us sufficient, uh, protection and maintenance area to keep the runoff from, uh. Uh, overflowing potentially into the adjacent wetland buffer zone. Uh, I think, I think that's it, uh, Brent. Um, but yes, I, I agree with everything you said.
Thanks, John. So that would be Phase A of Phase One of the construction project. Switching to the last sheet, um, is Phase B. You will notice, uh, Phase A has been loaded out and it's been completed to subgrade. The blue construction road remains, but in theory they start building the, the regular road. And start converting this to the land that is shown on the design plans where we have a stormwater basin. Uh, Unit One, lots of grass and lots of plantings along Chabaco Road. The green area remains, um, that is John's, um, stockpile loadout area. That's the muck pile management area that will remain in effect. Um, for the duration of construction as long as they're using the, um, the ledge material. And then the purple area, similar to that orange area. On the last phase is the area that he plans on either taking off-site or using for fill. Um, within seven days of, of blasting. The pink area in through here is the area to go into the stockpile area for muck pile management. John anticipates using the crusher for Phase. B of this project in through forty-seven and fifty. Um, where the crusher footprint is shown here is meant for Phase Two of construction. Uh, John, I'll, I'll defer to you to, to add any more detail that I may have missed.
No, I think you covered it, uh, pretty well there, Brent. I don't have much comment. But, uh, aside from that, uh, the gray area that's shown will be, uh. Uh, that will be all down to grade. No longer will just the side of the project that was shown on the last slide, the yellow area be to grade. We'll have plenty of access, uh, to turn trucks around and get them in and out of the site, um, in this, by the time we reach this, uh, level. So.
Awesome. Thanks, John.
Yeah.
I'm going to flip through some of these slides here. Um, I think we've covered a lot of this. I will flip to my last slide, um, which I wanted to just talk about, about the SWIP a little bit more. Um, the SWIP is, is a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Um, it was submitted to you. Uh, probably a good month ago, maybe even more. And it, and it was peer reviewed by the town peer reviewer, T E C. And the intent of a stormwater pollution prevention plan is for a document to John, for John to abide by. To help prevent any erosion or spills that occur on-site. Basically a construction guide for him to monitor what's going on as well as use as a, as an aid. In making sure that he doesn't have any erosion or spills. It is an actual EPA permit that we will file before construction. Um, it is tied to the owner and the contractor and the EPA does monitor it. The, the monitoring that is required by, by John and the owner is weekly construction inspections. Of erosion control practices as well as making sure that there's been no spills on-site, that the dust is handled properly. And all of the practices that we've implemented in the plan are, are, um, being managed properly. The, the plan also provides for, for other things that are, may not be necessarily on the plan. Um, there are, there are items that John will encounter during construction that he'll have to, uh, plan for. And this guide provides him with different management practices, different erosion control features that he can use. On-site to help maintain and prevent any erosion. The other thing that this guide also provides is help for him to handle the dust that's on-site to make sure that it doesn't exceed any, any thresholds. With that, I'm going to hand it over to John and to Matt. To kind of wrap up any of the construction items and, and touch on anything that I may have missed.
What do I, uh, what do I go first? So, um, one of the topics we want to talk about, construction vehicles, employee personal vehicles, uh, queuing, staging, parking. We touched on this. Uh, part of our, our phasing plan, our A and B is to cover. Uh, limiting and, and making sure that there is no construction vehicle staging on Chabaco Road. Uh, if that is to happen, uh, for a utility connection or for a. Uh, piece of equipment that can't make access to the site in the beginning, we will ensure that there's a police detail on-site. Um, areas for, uh, storage, handling, processing excess materials, we kind of went over that in the maps. Um, I think that, uh, we'll, uh, we'll answer any questions once we finish with this presentation regarding that. And, um, stages of clearing stabilization, we touched on that as well. Uh, we intend to, uh. Uh, remove the trees. Uh, we will log length the trees that are usable for, uh, timber harvest. Um, they will be recycled into building materials by our, uh, land clearing contractor. We, uh, plan to chip the heads of the trees. Uh, and the chip is, uh, typically, uh, brought to a couple of facilities that, uh, burn it for power. Um, that's, that's what we're doing right now with, uh, chip. And, uh, the stumps we're going to, uh, process on-site. We're going to retain the stump grindings to use for, uh, additional erosion control measures. Uh, we've had a lot of discussions with Brent and, uh, it's an acceptable interim practice to have small windrows. Uh, we have heavy onset of rain and we're worried about water running down. We can build check dams utilizing the stump grindings. As well as if we have a problematic slope that's in a temporary state that can't be seeded. We can utilize, uh, stump grindings as a mat to try to hold the hill. So, uh, we plan to, uh, also grind the stumps to limit hauling out, uh, potentially hundreds of loads of stumps off the site. Um, the, uh, the just additional trucking, uh, will just, we're hoping to limit some of that by doing this. Um, our operating hours typical for Onyx Corporation, uh, is Monday through Friday schedule. Um, we will adhere to the local bylaw and, and, and rules of the town. But typical Monday through Friday schedule, uh, seven AM to four, four-thirty PM. Um, and, uh, we work Saturdays if for some reason we get behind schedule and we'll abide with whatever, uh, whatever rules there are. Um, construction routes, we, we spoke about those, uh. Uh, most likely all heavy truck, all, all heavy trucks are going to be taking that route, uh, in and out of the town, whether they're going to Bentley Warren or not. We're not going to have deliveries of material coming a different route. We'll send them up Route One and back down the same direction to keep consistency. Um, and, uh. Stabilizing the slopes, um, you know, that's done with excavators, bulldozers, uh, rollers. Uh, sometimes we place, uh, temporary rock slopes to help with runoff. Sometimes we'll use the stump grindings as we spoke about. And, um, we plan to use the topsoil. And the remaining stone, we plan to crush and reuse on-site to gravel our roads. Uh, make our stone bases and, uh, and better piping, uh, with the onsite material. So we're hoping to process there so that we don't have to have lots of loads of materials delivered as well to the, to the, uh, project. We believe we're going to be able to make, uh, eighty percent of our, uh, consumable construction materials, meaning gravel, stone, sand. Uh, all that stuff from the onsite material. And, um, which will limit some of the trucks. Um, stone reuse protocols, so, uh, strict compliance of the SWIP. We're going to man, we're going to, you know, comply with that as Brent said, um, we're held to, we're held to that. We're going to do, uh, all the reporting that's required. And, um. Uh, hauling, uh, we kind of touched on this. Every nine to ten minutes will be a truck coming to and from the site during removal operations. Which is a duration of roughly eighty days. I believe it's seventy-eight days in our chart. Um, it's not an exact science. Uh, things do happen with weather. Uh, depending on when this project gets off the ground, we may, uh, make a call for safety reasons to not necessarily perform eighty loads in a day. Um, so we're not, uh, we're not guaranteeing that that's the production rate, but that's our best guess at, uh, at. How the, how the rate of work is going to go. And that's based on our experience from working with Maine drilling and blasting. And also, uh, our, uh. Forty-plus years in business. Uh, my father started the company in nineteen eighty and, uh, I've been doing this since, uh, since I could walk. So. Um, other than that, I think, uh. Matt, do you want to speak a little bit to, uh, possibly the next slide here? That's, uh, you know, the dust mitigation, uh, minimization and what you guys have for options and, and what they could expect.
Could I just ask a question before you proceed on this? Um, when you were talking about loads every nine to ten minutes for seventy-eight days, was that just rock removal? And, or did it include, um, the removal of stumps as well?
Uh, we won't, we don't intend to remove any stumps, um, Marnie, from the site. Um, our plan is to grind them onsite and reuse the material. And the, uh, to answer your question about the, the truck trips every nine or ten minutes, that's referring to the rock export portion of the project. So not lumber deliveries, not, uh, you know, any imported material that possibly is needed to haul in.
And then one other question, I, your route is going through downtown Ipswich. And, uh, I don't know if you've driven through downtown Ipswich, but it can be quite congested. And when there's parking on both sides of Route one A, it can be kind of tricky. So I'm, I'm wondering if you have alerted the town of Ipswich, um, about what they might expect. Uh, uh, with this, uh, Bentley Warren, uh, trucks going through their downtown.
Um, we haven't, but, um, Bentley Warren has been in, in, uh, that location for fifty-plus years. And, uh, they actually collaborated with us on the best route. So, um, I believe in their experience that they quite commonly go that direction. I'm not sure where they'd be headed, but they actually suggested that to us. It avoids the light bridges, low wires. Um, they don't want to be in the back roads where there's children. They want to be on the main, the main drag as much as they can. So, uh, that was our, that was our best, uh, assumption. I did not personally speak to Ipswich about it at all.
No, I just wondered because I think anyone who's driven along Route one A, um, knows that sometimes it's, um. The road appears ki, you know, relatively narrow if, if cars are parked on both sides. So ju- just a, an observation.
I really ride it all the time, drive it all the time. I don't quite see your problem, Marnie.
Oh, it's not, it's not a problem. It's just that, you know, we drive in smaller vehicles. These are bigger trucks. So.
Yeah, I agree, but I still don't see the problem. I, I haven't noticed that it, uh, gets narrow in places. I don't see what you're talking about.
Well, when you go over the choke bridge in that, in that area.
Maybe, maybe up there. Yeah, okay.
It's, sorry, I've recently been part of a hundred and six thousand cubic yard excavation project. And it's unlikely that this would be the route trucks are taking. It, it, the majority of this material is not going to Bentley Warren's site to be processed. It would go to wherever the excavating company has, uh, need for the fill. So it, I think it, it's a great pla, you got to start with a plan and it's a great plan. Uh, but it's only a plan and, and the, uh. The excavating, excavating company again will take the route.
Yeah.
To the site where they're, where they're going to be using the material.
Patrick, I get what you're saying. Uh, they've done this for years. We haven't. They know what they're doing. They'll pick out the route that works.
Right, but it's, it's unlikely the majority of this material will be going back to Bentley Warren's site.
Yeah.
That's, that's where the material is headed. That's where we'd like to take it and we actually have negotiated with them to take it. So.
All of it. Know how to get it there.
Yeah, that's the plan. Just so you guys know, we're not, we're not, um, you know, just coming up with a frivolous plan here. It's, there's been a lot of research put into this. So.
We, I agree. I understand.
So, yeah, they have the room to accept all of it, uh, as well. So. Um, Matt, do you want to continue on with the, uh, dust mitigation? And, uh, you know, kind of talk about rock drill and how you, how your process works there during the drilling?
Yeah, sure. Um, basically it's, it's a pretty simple process and I'll try to keep it brief here, uh, with respect to everybody's time. But essentially, um, I'm not sure how familiar, if at all, anybody here is with rock drilling equipment these days. But it's come a long way in the last twenty years. And right now, all of our rock drills are actually self-contained units. So there is no compressor, no loud air, um, air compressor tow behind. Necessary anymore. They're all hydraulically driven, self-contained units. And they actually, um, are fitted with vacuum systems. Um. So the process of drilling rock, as you know, if you drill at home, if you drill, you know, a hole in your wood or. In the, in your concrete or anything, it's going to produce material. Um, our drills are outfitted with vacuum systems just above the point of. Um, insertion. So they're going to collect the dust. And the dust is filtered and the heavier material is dropped behind the drill. Um, so they are self-contained units and they have filters in them to take out the silica, uh, particles. Um, on top of that, as an added thing, what we have is, um, we can introduce water at the drill tip. And that is also used in conjunction with the vacuum system to contain the dust that is produced throughout the process. And, and that's pretty much, um, along in the short of, uh, how the drill works.
Interesting.
Um, other than that, you know, from, uh, Onyx's side, which would be, uh. Uh, loading out the rock, uh, we worked with, uh, Matt and his team on some, uh, pretty massive, uh, export projects. And, uh, uh, the mitigation does, does change. Uh, some days of heavy rain, you don't finally have to do much, uh, spraying of any water onto the, onto the blast locations prior to them going off. To assist with, um, you know, uh, dust going in the air. Uh, some days it's extremely dry out and we find that we have to water down the shot before we shoot it. Um, we, uh, we kind of have to make those adjustments as we go. Um, we also, uh, when it comes to, uh, hammering the rock, we don't find much, uh, dust emission. From, uh, sizing the rock down to be able to, uh, process it. We do find, uh, noise, uh, from that activity hammering, which I'm, I'm positive that some of the people have heard in their, in their, uh, lifetime. Um, we have, uh, three, um. Rock hammers that are in our fleet. Um, we've just purchased them in the last two years and they all have a noise dampening enclosure on them. So that loud tinny ting 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 that everybody is familiar with is more of a, a dead blow sound. Um, it's, uh, hard to describe, but, uh, more of a thud than a ting, uh, which wears on people's, uh. Patience at their homes. Um, we do anticipate having a tight blast design with, with, uh, Matt's team. And trying to limit the oversized rocks so we don't have a ton of hammering on the project. Um, the, uh, other things, so when we go to actually, uh, process the rock for reuse on-site, we use a rock crusher. Um, some people are probably familiar with them. It's on tracks so that we can move it around. Um, and, uh, it's Tier Four compliant. Uh, we comply with, uh, MCH's regulations and OSHA's regulations with use of that equipment. And, uh, they all have spray bars on them and we would have a water truck adjacent to the, uh, the crusher at all times. Um, both to protect our workers as well as, uh, dust blowing off the plant. Um, I don't believe, I, I'd be lying to you if I said there's no dust. Um, that is not achievable. Um, the process that, uh, Matt and I are going to perform out there is, uh, you know, is, is rock removal. And during the blast, you may get a plume of dust and, uh, we'll do our best to mitigate that. Um, but, uh. We try to comply with and will comply with every regulation that's out there. I don't know if, uh.
Then John, can you just describe, um, the process by which you try to mitigate noise using earthen berms, et cetera? In the locations of your, of your processing?
Sure. So that green, uh, hatch area that we were, uh, showing you, uh, was, was kind of chosen for the. Uh, stockpile area and initial processing of the rock and that's to hammer it. And, um, the, uh, that location is, uh, one of the lowest natural points of sight. And, uh, what we thought would be effective, uh, and we, and we know is effective is when you can break the line of sight from the noise. Um, you can basically knock it, knock it right down. You end up reflecting the noise upward instead of horizontally off of people's homes. So, um, we anticipate to hammer the rock and process it to size there. And then when it goes over to the crusher, uh, there's two locations we showed. Uh, at that location, we would pile the rock in, uh, in a berm, a berm fashion, um, to kind of surround the crushers as much as we can. And that as well will allow that noise to be. And that as well will allow that noise to be reflected upward. Um, it's a very common practice that we've been using for years and, uh, it's very, very effective.
Thank you.
Sure.
And, and John, I think you should add that you're a minimum of eight hundred feet away from the nearest structure. And it's probably greater than eight hundred feet away. If you want to show that on the, on the construction plan, it'd be great.
Correct, yep. So, uh, our first, our first location where the crusher would be, uh, those are units, uh, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty there. Um, I know we had checked the distances. I know it's over seven hundred feet from the closest resident, I believe. Um, and then also the, uh, gray hatch areas is equally as far, if not further. Um, one benefit to the project is having that natural depression when Maine starts to blast. Um, there's going to be, uh, reflection from the blast back towards the green area as we do that first phase of work. So, um, you know, we're gonna have, uh, noise being emitted, uh, towards the purple area in this drawing. So, um, I think it'll be a nice way, um, to introduce the work without immediately reflecting noise at the homes. And everybody can, uh, get prepared and, and familiar with what the, uh, sound of the blasting and removal work is.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Um, I just have a question, uh, Marnie.
Yes, I was going to open it up to board questions at this time, Emile, so please.
Uh, you, you have this picture, uh, I'm, I'm curious about phase one, phase two. And, um, I see the footprint there for the crusher that will be located there, I guess. I conclude it at toward the end of phase one. That will be the position of it. Is that correct?
Uh, that would be the position for, uh, uh, phase two. That's where we'd set up when we begin the phase two operation.
So will all the blasting be completed then in phase two? Uh, before you put the crushing equipment in that footprint?
Um, Brent, you can probably, Brent, I believe that that, uh, rock cut in that area was rather insignificant. I'm not even sure if there's a lot of rock removal there. Um, do you remember, Brent?
There, there is some rock removal there and I would expect that there will be blasting in, in phase two, uh, John. Um, so this will be the crusher area, um, for the areas like in through here, um, and some foundations that may require blasting.
Right, so it wouldn't be first thing, um, but that would be where we didn't tend to process phase two's material. Yeah.
But, but I think it's important to note, um, first of all, in the blast plan, it's twenty-six days of blasting in phase two. But it's important to note that phase two will not be disturbed at all until, till we go there. So all the work in phase one, um, is being done. There's no disturbance in phase two.
Oh, so there wouldn't be no blasting there then or tree cutting? Is that correct?
Not, not until phase two of the, um, construction starts.
Yeah, thank you, Larry, yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions at this time?
Did want to make a comment, Marnie. Uh, the town did receive an email this afternoon from its peer review consultant regarding their review of the SWIP, which, uh, again is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, uh, that had been submitted by the applicant. Uh, you'd heard that mentioned earlier, but, uh, uh, our consultant advised us that, uh, the, uh, plan did fit all, uh, industry and contemporary standards. Uh, they did tell us that it does need to be finalized, uh, as the project advances. Uh, they did also, uh, recommend that a, uh, project, excuse me, monitor, uh, be, uh, in place during the, uh, construction phase uh, to make sure that, uh, you have, uh, particulate matter and runoff is, uh, is managed as we can make it.
Uh, yes, I, I reviewed the SWIP. I, I can't say I reviewed it, uh, uh, meticulously, but I, I did notice that there was a, a lot of, uh, of use of the term TBT to be determined. And, uh, it, it looked, um, like there was, you know, some boilerplate in there. What I noticed, one thing that, I, I know GEI said that there would be some type of, uh, an underlay, uh, layer uh, for the stockpiles, that there would be some kind of impermeable sur- surface there. And I didn't see that mentioned. And I also noticed that, um, there wouldn't be monitoring of turbidity. And, and I thought that was one of the things that was part of the blast plan, but it may be a reference to, uh, a, a different type of analysis. But if anyone could speak to that, that would be appreciated.
Sure, Madam Chair, I, I can speak to that. The, the impermeable liner that's part of the muck pile management plan is, is found in our construction details. Um, once we put the final SWIP together, we certainly can include it. Um, but in our construction details, um, you'll find the muck pile management plan that has an impermeable liner. Those plans were submitted to you back in March, um, March eighth, I believe. Um, so you should be able to find them in there. And then as of the turbidity, um, the turbidity is a new introduction by the EPA as of February of twenty-twenty-two. Um, it was included in the SWIP that was submitted. However, it's not applicable to this specific project. Um, the turbidity requirements are for projects um, that have discharges directly to tier three or, um, tier two or tier two and a half impacted, um, waters. And that's direct discharge, not charge, discharge that would go through many wetlands and then find its way to a tier two, two and a half or three impacted wa- uh, water body. Um, so turbidity frame wouldn't be a part of this project. This is why it was left out of the SWIP.
Okay, so the turbidity I was thinking of is the well monitoring that you're going to be doing on the adjacent wells for turbidity, correct?
That is correct. That is part of our well monitoring plan that is, has been put in place by GEI and GZA, Ms. Crouch, yes.
Okay, uh, does anyone else have any questions then? Because if not, um.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, okay.
Um, the first question is, uh, there was some passing comment on topsoil. Um, I'm assuming that meant loam and I was just curious what the plan was with, um, existing loam. And, uh, that was one question. Second question was, uh, better understanding the, the grading and filling in the green area that you had called, um, the stockpile load area, out area for phase one. Um, I know there's a significant change in grade in the existing contours there and I'm just curious what the plan was for the grading and filling to be, uh, during the, the temporary use of that as a, a loadout area. So those are my two questions.
Um, uh, Brent, I can, I can take a shot at this. So, uh, the green area is the location where we will be using that, uh, muck pile management plan that's in the detail sheet. And, uh, that. Um, so, uh, that area there that's in green will be, uh, treated with that detail. Uh, that low red area that was shown on one of the slides is the actual, uh, depression that will be, uh, channeling the water too, uh, from the liner system and, and padding material to protect it that will be under the muck pile. That's where, uh, that's where that facility will be and that area is large enough to place the fill in there. What'll happen, Jonathan, is, uh, we'll fill that area to make a mean grade that we can drive on with blast rock. It'll be unprocessed blast rock. Uh, that'll be our area where we, uh, reduce the size of the material down from whatever it, uh, whatever its top cap size is to about a twenty-four inch minus, which would allow it to be loaded out and or crushed. And, um, in the end, after, uh, all the, uh, materials landed there, been processed and tested to be used, uh, other places or exported, we would then remove that, uh, fill, which would be just a rock fill unprocessed. And we would crush it and replace it back into the road base, uh, to make our, uh, structural fill in that location. Um, hopefully that answers it. As far as your loam question, uh, topsoil and loam, uh, same product in, in our eyes. Um, there's not a lot of topsoil and loam on the site. I don't see any kind of a surplus from our activities that will require export. And we would plan to screen and reuse the topsoil onsite for landscaping and, uh, grading. I'm sorry, I think you're muted, John.
Right. My question was, for the first, on the first question was, um, more about the topography. I understand that's a fairly steep slope. Uh, and so I was wondering how you would handle the, that grade, that, the topography to make it a usable area as a staging area.
Um, that low area there, it, it goes, it climbs off the roadway and then at about station four hundred, it dives back down to actually a fill situation where the roadway is higher than the existing grade. So we would, uh, strip the topsoil off of there with, uh, tracked machines that can, uh, navigate the terrain. So bulldozers and excavators and we would, uh, uh, windrow the material and then load it and haul it out back to a location where, uh, where we could screen it and use it. Does that answer your question?
Um, if you put, put up the slide, I, I maybe I can answer, I can ask it more clearly. Basically, from the bottom of the sheet to the top of the sheet in that green area, I think is a significant, um, grade change if you go to, uh, yeah, okay, so down at unit thirty-two, uh, the grade there versus the grade, say, for example, out at the edge of the mulch sock, you know, where you've got the red treatment pond and whatnot. Um, I'm just, I, I, since I don't have the existing conditions in front of me, I'm just curious what the grade changes there from the bottom of the green, um, hatched area to the top of the green hatched area on the sheet. That's all.
Um, Brent, I don't have the, uh, grading plan in front of me.
I don't have the exact grade change for support from, from station twenty-one, um, down here. But the reason we chose this area was because it, it is one of the only areas of, of fill onsite. Um, so there won't need to be any sort of, uh, blasting or removal, um, for them to start building up this stockpile area. Um, the, the fill area is actually good for this, this area because they can build it up over time, um, with the material that they're testing directly there. Um, so that's why it was chosen. You know, it, it's not going to be perfectly flat day one. It'll, it'll obviously be built up as, as John navigates and, and continues to progress through the development. Um, but this area was chosen for that specific reason because it's an area of fill.
And, I mean, naturally, I believe if I remember it correctly, uh, to answer this question, you know, unit thirty-two, uh, gradually the natural grade goes down gradient towards unit five and four, towards this red area where the basin is designed. Uh, is that true, Brent, uh, from your memory? That's how I remember it.
Yep, you are correct, John.
Uh, actually, uh, I did look at the, um, grading plan and it appeared to me that from the roadway, that was about ninety feet. And then at the, uh, base of the stockpile area on, i- i- it was about, uh, sixty-six feet. So that's not, that's twenty-four feet difference and that's from the grading plan, which of course this would be different. But I did wonder whether the, um, I'm, I'm struggling to read this. You have a twelve-inch diameter mulch sock and, and I assume that you've calculated that to be sufficient, um, to hold all this material, uh, given, um, the, the slope there.
We have and, and it's not necessarily holding the material, it's, it's preventing erosion. Um, and, and we've, we've implemented a lot of, of practices to make sure that there's no erosion on any of these back slopes and including stone armor as well as mulch berm on top of the slope. So, so what you're seeing is, is three different erosion control practices on, on these slopes out through this area to make sure that there's no erosion.
Thank you.
Any further questions by board members?
I, I had a couple, Marnie, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Ben.
Uh, how about protection around the vernal pool? I, I noticed the silt sock or mulch sock going around the exterior of the site, but it was nothing indicated around, uh, the vernal pool area there.
So Patrick, the, uh, the vernal pool area, you, you talked about this area?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's actually uphill, um, of all the construction. So, uh, the reason we didn't put it is, you know, we're not, we're not gonna put a silt fence or a silt sock on, on top of the hill. Um, erosion will never get to the top of the hill, so we don't, we don't typically do that.
That makes sense. And, and is there any construction fencing going around the exterior of the site or is it just the silt sock?
I'll let John talk about construction then, thank you.
Um, I don't, uh, I don't know if we've gotten that far in our discussions with, uh, with the development team on what, uh, site security measures they're gonna have there. Um, I don't know, uh, you know, if an orange delineation fence will, you know, will be sufficient in areas or chain link. I, I can't answer that now without talking with the owner.
Yeah, okay. Is, is, is the, is the temporary access road, uh, intended to be paved, you know?
Uh, no, it's not. It's, uh, gonna be a, a gravel road with, uh, crushed stone to scrub the tires on the trucks as they come in and out.
Okay. So I commend the reuse of material plan that you have. That's excellent. I think it's, um, it's, it's often overlooked, the noise coming from a construction site being the beeping from the trucks as they back up uh, versus the, the crushing of stone and whatnot. So it's good that you've added, uh, that you've included a cul-de-sac or a, around a turnabout for the trucks to minimize their backing up. Um, been around a lot of construction sites and that is often the noisiest bit coming from a site is the beeping. Um, are you in, are you actually the GC for the, for just the, uh, establishing of the site? Or are you also gonna be, uh, overlooking the construction of the homes?
Uh, we've been doing the, uh, all the site work and, um, stabilization grading work. We would not be doing the vertical construction.
Okay, Patrick, I could, I could answer that. We have our own staff. We have a vice president of construction, site superintendents. Uh, and they work hand in hand with John. John is the, uh, site contractor for the operation.
All right, good. Uh, cause I, I just, I mean, that some of the, if this is the construction discussion, I think it'd be good to have a sense of the overall durations of the projects in, in its, you know, the site establishment. Uh, and then the construction and then the, the labor at peak. And, you know, they often will come with their own Conexes or site establishment trailers, wherever there it is. Um, but maybe this isn't the time to talk about the whole overall.
We, we did submit, Patrick, a, a schedule, an overall schedule.
Okay, yeah.
It, it does, this schedule does not show a delineation between, uh, phase one and phase two where sales will be take, uh, sales will be occurring. But, but the overall plan and the duration is, uh, is available.
Okay. And, and the only, the, the last, the last question, it's, I think it's been, um, maybe underestimated and not, uh, John, are you concerned at all about the de-watering process during the excavation? Or is, is that something you just deal with as it comes?
It, it's case, yeah, it's case by case. Um, you know, I think that, uh, our approach, uh, was well thought out as far as if we were to blast rock and find a fissure. Um, it's gonna leak back towards our, our, uh, staging area there, our muck pile location, which would then in, in, uh, in sequence would flow downhill to our pond through our muck pile. So having the pond on the down gradient for testing is gonna allow us to monitor that runoff and give us an opportunity to, you know, expand it. Maybe we need to pull the muck pile back. We find the pond needs to be modified. It gives us the ability to do that without worrying about, uh, blasting more rock to make more space to hold our water onsite. Um, I'm sure, uh, it sounds like you're familiar with the construction, uh, uh, background here. And it is a fluid motion and that's, uh, what the SWIP's in place for. We need to react when we need to. And, uh, a lot of times, you know, from, uh, what I heard about the project, you know, there is, uh, you know, there's, there's shallow groundwater in the bedrock here. It's relatively dry. Um, I have not heard that there's a, a lot of rock, uh, a lot of water in the rock. And, uh, the fact that we're taking out a hillside there from the rear, heading towards the road, I think is gonna give us a really good understanding of where the rocks, uh, if there is water, where it's coming from and how we're gonna deal with that before we have a discharge, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions?
Just one more question, Marty. Um, is the, am I correct that the ledge is, is now gone? Um, the upper ledge? The vertical, uh, ledge that was, uh, uh, next to, uh, a roadway A?
You mean behind you former unit 31?
Yes, right. Is that, is that now gone?
It, it is likely that it, it will be removed.
But may or may not be. Is there any more to the construction management plan, uh, Ms. Ma'am, that we're going to see?
I'm, I'm, I am very confused by the question and the answer. So the question is, is we not blasting in that area, right?
Yeah, the question is, is the vertical ledge there still there or is it, is it gone now?
There, if, if.
When you remove that unit 31?
Right. So the reason for removal is we don't have to do as much blasting in the area and if Brent shows you, so there is going to be ledge. We're going to grade, right, Brent? We're not going to do a ledge face. We aren't going to blast deep to, to, um, create a grade, but we do have to do some blasting because it's adjacent to the road, but not as deep.
Yeah.
So it, that's why I think Brent's answer was, you know, I mean, there's a reduction of 15,000 cubic yards from removing, relocating that.
Yeah.
So I apologize, but was it, you had a follow-up question, Mrs. Alquist, and I apologize. I don't remember what that was. You.
I just ran through a calculation just to go back to your, your, uh, rock removal.
Sure.
And, uh, cause you had given us a stat that didn't show up in this chart, uh, before that you had a 1,300 cubic yards per day is 46 truckloads. So in running through the numbers, it looks like the number of trucks leaving the site, about 3,600 trucks for the, the 101,000 cubic yards of, uh, rock. Okay.
Yes. So before the original, when we had been talking about it, I think it was with Ms. Crouch as well. And she was doing the math and we were trying to like work it out based on some information because we said there'd be 180. Um, we hadn't included swell because we didn't know, is it being processed onsite? Is it not? Because then I guess when you don't process, it means you can't transmit and transport as much. So we wouldn't be able to give you the right number. That's why.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Pat Norton, uh, I, I, I'm sure we have questions from the audience or Pat, Patrick Grefford, if you would facilitate, um, uh, uh, enabling people to ask questions. Uh, I think we should, uh, afford, um, the public now an opportunity to, um, obtain some additional information that, that board members may not have elicited and, and that, uh, were, have clarified.
Yeah, I see one hand raised. It's Nancy Peterson.
Uh, yeah, I'm just, hello, sorry, we're just, um, starting video. Okay. Hi, Nancy and Paul. Um, we live on Tobacco Road. Two questions. One is regarding the trucks exiting Tobacco Road. I understood the turn, they're going to make the right turn or at least in some cases. Um, that is a really dangerous intersection. Um, right now, uh, there's trucks that come in and, you know, there's, um, I've seen it myself near accidents all the time. How is that? And then maybe that's more of a town question, but I don't know if that's something the planning board should consider.
May I, Ms. Crouch?
Uh, certainly. I'm sure you're going to refer to the, um, traffic study that was period.
I most certainly am. So Ms. Peterson, we actually had, um, we had contracted for a traffic report to be delivered to the, to the town and to the planning board in order for them to assess, you know, the quality of the road and the ability for it to handle the traffic that we're going to be generating. Um, and based on that, um, you know, the site conditions, you know, with the truck rules and the timing, um, it is actually an acceptable means for egress out of the site. So I mean, it's, you base it on our traffic report.
I guess I would respectfully disagree, having seen almost accidents, my husband and I frequently at that location and that's with just regular cars.
Let me, the concern is, is there's a telephone pole right at the end. And if I turn right, I stay to the right of the telephone pole, but if somebody is coming onto Tobacco Road from the, that direction, they turn inside that telephone pole and pass me. If I have a big truck. Yeah. And, and if you go left, it's the same thing. You, you have traffic both coming in like metalwork farm, they would come in to the left of that telephone pole. But if I'm going out and I want to make that left turn, I'm left to the television. So it's like two lanes on either side of the telephone pole, one exiting, one coming in. You've got a big truck making a turn either right or left. They're going to take up that whole entrance exit side of the telephone pole. And I just, I just think the town should look at, uh, how that intersection is and whether or not that's the flow of traffic they want or they want to do something different.
Yeah, I mean, that is the most appropriate flow of traffic and the most direct way to go. And currently it does handle, you know, trucks and it does handle large trucks. Um, and these are all CDL drivers, so they're exceptionally experienced drivers. I mean, John can talk to it, um, more appropriately than I, um, it, but.
There's no room. I'm, I'm very familiar, uh, with, with that intersection you're speaking of. Um, it's a little bit up gradient to make the turn. Um, if, if a truck is making that right, it's going to be hugging that telephone pole on its driver's side and taking the right. There will be no one squeezing between the pole and the roadway. Um, I believe there's a lot more room on the other side of the telephone pole. And, uh, I actually observed somebody take a left exactly how you described it. And then, uh, at a later date came in the next entrance, uh, up further. So I don't know, it's not well signed or placarded to say where to enter onto tobacco off of that. Uh, Onyx could certainly offer to add a sign there, uh, to clarify on that corner, uh, you know, with the town's consent, um, to help, to help mitigate that. We could put heavy trucks entering and exiting signs up there and, uh, please be aware, caution ahead. And also we could add some arrows to try to guide people. Uh, it's a valid point and I appreciate that comment.
I, I have another question as well. Um, so we, since we were just looking at, we're looking at the vernal pool up on top of the hill, but there's a vernal pool right down, I think closer to the construction site, uh, right behind, um, the homes in that area, one of which is mine, the other one is, um, um, Bill Curz. That wasn't mentioned at all. And it seemed to, I mean, I, it's, it's hard for me to tell because you couldn't see it on the map where the, where all this is taking place in relationship to that vernal pool and to the homes in that area.
So, so we can absolutely bring up the map again. May I, Ms. Crouch, just if I have Brent bring up the map? And I first would like to say that we are outside of all buffers. And with regard to the actual vernal pool, the top of that hill that where that Y-shaped formation is, I don't believe that's a certified vernal pool. I think that's just, we agreed. We agreed to maintain 100 feet distance and we actually are more than 100 feet away. The vernal pool is actually, I believe, at the top. Um, there you go. That's a certified vernal pool and you can.
There's a different one. Um, I'm sorry, there's a different one down at the bottom of the hill.
I don't know. Can you tell us, so looking at this, can you just identify it somehow on the plan?
Yeah, I just, I can't really point or anything. I don't.
No, if you just describe it and like, say what units near maybe.
Top of the hill where the four units are to the right of the vernal pool.
Okay. So she, she is talking about the Y formation, Brent.
Right. And then you go down from there towards Tobacco Road. You see two, two, um, lots, you see the lots there. There is a vernal pool right there, right above. I, I don't think it's that one. It's down. I think, I think it's a different one, but it's a certified vernal pool for sure. I'm, I know that.
It's, it, there is, there may be one offsite, but the only certified vernal pool, I believe, on this property is, is this. I mean, we've already gone through the conservation commission, but is the one that, you know, Brent is pointing to. And then there was some discussion about there being potential for one being, uh, within the wetland. If I, if you will, Brent Show or the one, if there's something, some consideration of that, but I don't believe that's been confirmed either. Um, but notwithstanding, we have maintained 100 foot buffer from it all. And, and consideration was given relative to that.
Right here. So it's offsite.
Right. Um, so we're, we're just talking about this, but I mean, it's, um, so I, I think, I think what my husband is saying is that the, the vernal pool that I have in mind is down below or not on the, um, landowner's land. I see Chris Davis has his hand raised, so he might have a better, he might know what I'm talking about and might be able to address this better. It's even though it's not on the, um, on the, you know, on the, the landowner's land for this project still would be impacted very much.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it'd be impacted, but I would say that it has to be reflected and shown and all of the wetland lines are. So I, I mean, and this has been, I, I, I don't know what to say other than it's been through conservation relative to the, the areas that are within, um, the jurisdiction of the CONCOM. But if, 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 if Ms. Crouch, would it be possible to, to allow Mr. Davis to talk so that they can maybe explain what they're really looking at? Cause I, they're, offsite would be in some instances thousands of feet away. So I don't know which one.
Absolutely. My recollection was that Mr. Huck, uh, uh, said that there was one certified vernal pool.
Yes.
And possibly three others that he, for the sake of argument, if you will, were, um, uh, was conceding where vernal pools for the purposes of, um, what, um, the applicant is planning, uh, for, for this site. So Mr. Davis, if you would like, if you can clarify, that would be helpful.
Yeah, unfortunately that wasn't the point I was going to speak to and I, I'm generally familiar with the vernal pools out there, but I, I really can't speak to, to this one, its exact location in relation to the.
Okay. But with regard to Ms. Crouch's statements, it's entirely correct. So the one vernal pool that's certified is the one at the top that shows 100 foot and is behind unit 34. That's a certified vernal pool. The, the Y-shaped structure, which is perched, it's a high, it's, it's actually a high, um, area of water collection. It's debatable whether or not that's a vernal pool, but we didn't want to have to debate it. And we just said, you know what? We're going to maintain the requisite distance and we're going to just assume it is for purposes of setback. And then there was some assertion, um, and Ms. Crouch is correct, that there was a vernal pool located, this would be the third, um, in one of the wetland, but that is also not been verified, but it's located within a wetland. And therefore the 100 feet that we're maintaining is still, um, the buffer is still in place. So you're a hundred percent correct, Ms. Crouch.
Uh, uh, Mr. Davis, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, uh, I'd, I'd like to just raise a concern based on my experience. Uh, I, I used to live very near the site, uh, on the other side on Partridgeberry Lane. So I was very familiar with it. I now live in Ipswich, about 900 feet from Bentley Warren, which, uh, I believe, uh, came up earlier is where a lot of the rock is going. Uh, Bentley Warren, uh, you know, uh, crushes rock. Uh, they have rock hammering. Um, they load trucks and they have, you know, heavy equipment that moves it around. And I've got to say that the, the noise is often deafening from those operations, even though I think it's a little further than some of the homes, uh, that I am and, and my neighbors are here, uh, from these operations that then they will be from the, the, the rock handling, uh, operations here. And there's, there's, uh, several hundred feet of, uh, of trees, uh, of forest, um, be, between the Bentley Warren fence line and, and the, the sort of the open area that, 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 uh, is between me and my home and the, uh, the operations. And, uh, it's, it's been sort of an ongoing, uh, problem that we can't keep our windows open. Uh, I'm often awakened in the morning when, when the noise starts. They've made various efforts. I've been in touch with Bentley Warren, uh, the principals, their lawyers. They made various efforts to reduce the noise. They put up a barrier made of rubber sheeting that was not very effective. They moved some operations around. So I'm really concerned about the, you know, the, the, the very loud persistent noise that's going to necessarily come from, you know, rock, uh, crushing, uh, rock, rock hammering and loading it onto the, these many trucks every day. And I was wondering what the, uh, the noise monitoring plan would be. The, the mass DEP has a noise regulation that I believe, uh, uh, prohibits noise at a fence line uh, of, of a, a facility or project, uh, that is more than 10 decibels above background. So i- is there a noise monitoring plan or how, how is background for this site, which I think is probably, you know, pretty quiet and pristine when it's a forest going to be established? And, um, how will noise at the fence line be monitored nearest the, the, the neighbors? And what will happen if the, that, you know, 10 decibel of the DEP policy i- is exceeded?
May I, may I, Ms. Crouch?
Yes.
So, um, I think John Durkin will speak to it, but there's also, yes, we're always going to comply with DEP regulations and it's not simply always 10 decibels above. It has to be a continuous noise, but I'm going to have Mr. Durkin speak to it because you're actually near, you know, a, a, a facility that's a business that generates it, that was probably there for 50 years, well before you moved in. And, and that's why they operate. There are certain locations that they're allowed to operate in. This is a temporary situation and it is not going to be deafening and we are going to comply. And I think John can address that because we're going to make every effort to mitigate and to minimize noise pollution. Um, John, please, if you would, and then Matt may end up wanting to add in. I'm unsure. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so I'm not an expert in noise. Uh, I have a lot of experience with it because, uh, Mr. Davis, it's a concern from everybody, uh, and that it's always adjacent to a project like that. I think, um, Jill's comment about Bentley Warren, they've been there for more than 50 years. And unfortunately for you, they are some kind of a grandfathered status there in their current operation. And, uh, that was prior to a lot of DEP regulations that now people comply to. So, um, with our operation, I, I think you're comparing us as well to a, uh, they have a mining operation going on there. Basically they have multiple shaker decks, wash decks, jaw crushers, cone crushers. You're probably talking about, uh, I'm very familiar with the location, at least 15 pieces of, of rock crushing and modifying and washing equipment. We're talking about two. Uh, we're talking about a jaw crusher and a cone crusher to make all of our materials. So, um, I don't think, uh, I'd say it's, uh, um, a viable comment to say it would be the same. Um, it's certainly disruptive for sure. And DEP regulations is 10 decibels above the ambient, but there's actually a timeframe where that has to be, uh, met. And, um, it's, it's a constant, um, constant elevated, um, emissions that DEP will regulate. And, uh, we would certainly invite DEP to the site at any point during our construction to monitor at the property line or wherever the, uh, you know, accusation of, of, uh, an offense. And we would make any modifications we could to, to mitigate it. And that may involve moving stockpiles to reflect that noise as I described. Maybe we don't have it in exactly the right place. It might also move, involve moving the, uh, crushing operation around the site to a more suitable location. Cause as the grading evolves, the site topography is changing. There might be a better location that's lower in the hole that would allow a visual break between the noise. Cause if you can see the, uh, device that's emitting, emitting the noise, you're getting the direct reflection of that noise. If you, i- if you cut it with a visual break, uh, which is what Bentley Warren was probably trying to do with those rubber mats you're talking about there. They're trying to create a break to reflect the noise back at their plant and upward. Um, that's the, that's the idea behind the shielding. We, we call it shielding. Uh, that's the term. Um, so, um, I think we had a really good plan for this. I, I think the topography of where the crushers are going to be, the location. Uh, the crushers are about equal distance, as you described, 700, 800 feet away. Um, but I think we're, the difference between Bentley Warren's operation and ours is, um, we're going to be blasting in a different location, hammering in a low point. So naturally we're going to have reflection upward. And, uh, so I don't believe the hammering operation is going to, um, be, be heard as obtrusively as probably you hear it. Um, we also have that, uh, jacket that goes over our crushers, uh, I mean, over our hammers that, uh, helps suppress the noise. It makes a big difference in that tinny, uh, ping ping noise that everybody's familiar with. And, uh, and, uh, we're, we're trying to be, uh, we're trying to be the best contractors we can be out there because this is what we do for a living. Um, we've been doing this since 1980 and, uh, we're well known for, we've done some pretty, uh, pretty involved projects with, with big. We've done some pretty uh, pretty involved projects with with big removal, with lots of residents around them. So.
Any further questions?
Sorry, there's Thomas.
You've got two, Marty.
Yep, um, Dave La- Lash.
Okay, Mr. Lash.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for all the time you're putting in. Uh, Dave Lash, um, Lakeshore Avenue, Hamilton. Um, I'm with the Tobacco Lake and Watershed Association. I think everyone knows by now that my main concern is downstream impacts. And I just want to bring up one point during construction. And I wonder if Brent could put up the very first drawing that he showed, which has the green triangle. So I'm excited. If I understand it, that green triangle was selected because it's a low spot and it would actually be brought up to grade with material from the site. So we're gonna have a very um, porous base in that green triangle. What I wanted to point out is that just to the south of that green triangle in the purple is a forty-foot um, very steep natural slope. And even though that purple area will be undisturbed during this first phase, an enormous amount of water is gonna come careening down off of that slope. So my concern is the uh, flow of water at both surface and below surface. And what happens with all the fines from the construction material? It's only a hundred plus feet away from the wetland itself. So I just want to raise that concern. I know it's been peer reviewed and I'm pleased to see that there's a mitigation with the pond and the treatment area that was noted in red earlier. But just, I just thought it was important to mention that this is really gonna act, this area is I, is I understand the topography is gonna really act as a funnel for an enormous volume of water during this phase of construction. Thank you.
So if I, if I could respond to that, um, enormous is a wild overstatement. Uh, the top of the slope for this area is roughly around station nineteen hundred, which means that the watershed that comes to that steep area is actually quite small um, in comparison to and really any watershed anywhere. Uh, we're pretty much talking about this area here that drains to the green area. That said, um, the the green area uh, will be brought up to grade. So it 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 will be of material that allows for infiltration. We have our erosion control put in place for this exact reason. Uh, there's the SWIP that needs to be implemented and followed by John Dar- John Durkin for this exact reason. So I have no, you know, there's no reason to believe that John won't follow the plan and handle this minimal stormwater perfectly.
Thomas, Thomas Nielsen.
Thank you, uh, Chair Crouch and the board. Uh, my name is Thomas Nelson. Um, I'm a licensed professional geologist. I work for Ransom Consulting. Um, and I, there were uh, two, two things that I'd like to um, bring up as observations this evening related to uh, rock export and blast rock handling. Um, the first one is uh, going back to the um, Emery and Garrett peer review that was done of the blast rock plan uh, back in, I believe, January. One of the uh, one of the the strong recommendations made there is that no blasted rock is to be used uh, is to be processed and used outside of the building footprints without an established detailed plan in place for addressing the possible leaching of uh, blasting and accelerant residues. And I bring that up mostly because uh, I I, a lot of the the discussion tonight has revolved around reuse of the blast rock on site, uh, using it to bring areas up to grade during construction, using it in various areas around the site. Um, and I just wanted to to make note of that recommendation from the town's peer reviewer. Um, the other thing that I wanted to talk about was the uh, the quantities estimates um, that were put out for um, the number of truck trips required to haul blast rock offsite. So uh, we we, there were some changes this evening based on what uh, from what we had been provided last Thursday that uh, took into account what looked like a twenty-five percent swell in the volume of rock. So it, the applicant right now is proposing to uh, export about a hundred thousand nine hundred cubic yards of uh, processed rock. So volume of rock after it's been blasted, processed, ready to be loaded on a truck. Um, and they estimate that to be about three thousand six hundred trucks, about forty to fifty trucks a day. Um, the the density of granite is such that uh, an in-place cubic yard of granite weighs about four thousand five hundred pounds. If you account for twenty-five percent swell there, you would reduce that to about three thousand three hundred and seventy-five pounds per cubic yard of rock that's been processed and ready to be loaded. Uh, that, if you look at, you know, what the legal load limits are for trucks on the road, which is typically eighty thousand pounds, sometimes eighty-seven thousand pounds, uh, that would allow for about fourteen point eight cubic yards of material to be loaded per truck. If you assume that the truck and trailer weighs about thirty thousand pounds, you have uh, approximately fifty thousand pounds of payload. So uh, using those density, the density of granite there, that really increases the number of truck trips from about three thousand six hundred to about six thousand eight hundred. So you've got an increase, uh, a significant increase in truck trips if you're gonna keep the trucks uh, underweight or not overweight, I suppose. Um, and that, if you assume forty-six trucks a day, works out to about a hundred and forty-eight days of hauling rock, uh, which is considerably more than what's been presented. Uh, I think it's also important to note uh, that the rate at which trucks are proposed to be loaded is is very fast. Uh, ten, ten minutes per truck for eight hours a day. Uh, it's a rate that certainly can be done, but it is challenging to maintain that pace. Uh, there are a lot of, a lot of complexities on the site. You need to have equipment dedicated to that work and it may impact other things going on on the site and they might need to stop loading trucks. So I think it's very reasonable to assume that uh, at any, on any given day, you're gonna have several interruptions in the pace of trucks. And so that forty-six trucks a day is is uh, really a very uh, aggressive number based on my experience uh, on similar sites. Um, and so I think.
Can I just make one, um, just one correction? I, and I can appreciate your analysis. It makes, you know, complete sense. And yes, the weight of rock, I, you know, I I think uh, probably Brent will comment to that, but I just wanted to clarify. So a legal load limit in Massachusetts for a dump trailer, which is a twenty-eight cubic yard um, uh, truck is uh, registered in ninety-nine thousand maximum weight. So um, we'd have to back in your numbers with using that factor to get the actual load count correct. Um, but your, your um, your analysis is is good, so.
Yeah, yeah, that that certainly would change it. If you can load to ninety-nine thousand, you know, once you subtract the weight of the cab and the trailer, maybe you're left with sixty or seventy thousand pounds. I think, I think twenty-eight cubic yards of the processed rock would weigh about ninety-four thousand five hundred pounds. So uh, I think, I think it would be, I think it, you're still looking at a considerable increase in the number of truck trips.
Neil, and the other correction that I'd make to that is you you got twenty-eight cubic yards that the trucks hauling. Um, it's uh, you gotta reduce that by the twenty-five percent swell. So you're actually only hauling, um, I'm sorry, just doing quick math here. Um, twenty-eight times point seven five. You have actual solid rock to make your weight comparison. You're, you're running roughly twenty-one cubic yards of rock out per load. So if you take twenty-one times thirty-three hundred uh, times forty-four hundred pounds, we should be legal load at thirty-five ton. So I I just, you know, I I get it and I totally see it. I just think that uh, we've further discussion or clarification can be done on that.
Yeah, yeah, I I I'm not quite sure I followed your, your math there. I wasn't, I couldn't tell if the the swell got double counted there or not. I I was thinking.
Well, the bodies, the bodies just hold twenty-eight cubic yards, so we can't, you know, that includes the swell, the swell is the the additional loads because of the void space. So I agree with you, your roughly two ton per cubic yard evaluation of the granite is is accurate. And then uh, you know, if you back that into what the void space is, I just took twenty-eight yards and multiplied by point seven five to reduce the capacity to twenty-one yards. And then I apply that math to forty-four hundred pounds gives me my load and I, we should be legal load at ninety-nine thousand at that calculation.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we're, I think we're doing the same thing, but from opposite ends. I reduced the the weight of the cubic yard by twenty-five percent. So you go from forty-five hundred pounds to thirty-three seventy-five. Um, and then you can fit tw- you know, if you, if you load it to twenty-eight yards at thirty-three seventy-five, you're you're overweight, so you need to reduce it down to, you you were saying twenty-one. I I I don't know if, I I haven't checked that, but that roughly.
Yeah, it should, it should be pretty close, though. You you're, you're on the right track and I think, you know, you're, you're looking at it the way you were. I think if you knew it was ninety-nine thousand, it would totally, if if it was eighty thousand, you're you're right on the right track, it wouldn't work, but.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, I think, I think that the point is still valid there that you're you're looking at, you know, over, over thirty-six hundred trucks. If you have to remove eight yards from every truck, you're adding a considerable number more trucks to that, to that load. Um, and so.
A hundred thousand, you know, I just want to make sure you're applying it to the eighty thousand cubic yard export total, not the hundred thou- hundred and one thousand.
So I I re- I reduce the, I reduce the the uh, bulk density of granite of forty-five hundred pounds per cubic yard to thirty-three seventy-five per cubic yard, assuming a twenty-five percent swell. Then uh, that, you can then use the hundred thousand nine hundred cubic yards as your basis for how many truck trips need to go out. You can't load twenty-eight yards in every truck because even with the swell, it's still gonna be overweight. And so you need to increase the number of truck trips uh, by a fair margin in order to take up that over, over capacity. That has been, you know, the 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 way it's calculated right now does not take into account that the trucks will be overloaded.
Okay. Thomas Nielsen, what does the term swell mean? Please?
Swell, swell is uh, as as John uh, accurately described is when, when you blast rock. So when, when rock is in place, uh, it has very little void space in it. When you blast it and you crush it, you introduce void space. Essentially, it's going from a solid block of rock to, you know, a figure, a pile of gravel or cobble or whatever you're,
Yeah, I got it.
Whatever size you break it down to, there's void space in there. So what John, what John has done is add twenty-five percent to the uh, in-place volume of rock to account for void space of twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Uh, in in the final product.
I got it. I just didn't understand solid versus a bunch of pebbles. Pebbles would take up more space for the same weight.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, a- am I correct then that the chart that we were um, discussing uh, quite at length uh, at the outset of the presentation needs to be amended somewhat?
I think, I think you're right. I think we need to address. I think Mr. Nielsen overstated it by saying it was double. I think it's pretty clear that that's not the case, but we can, we'll have John um, rerun that table and confirm what the weights are because if it, there was a substantial difference in the comparison of weights. So we can do that, Ms. Crouch. That's not a problem. I mean, the fact of the matter is that that that's the number of trucks and, you know, basically a minimum that will be coming out. And to the extent they're overload, there there's overcapacity, then there will be additional trucks. Um, but I i- if Mr. Nielsen's done, I do want to correct a few things that he had said, cause it just.
Yeah, Joe, let me just touch on one thing too. So I mean, you'll probably concur, Thomas, that, you know, it's not an exact science as well. You know, we, we may have some rock there that's got some soil in it, may have very little void space. They may be hauling twenty-four yards. There could be some that are just strictly two foot minus, which is gonna have maybe a thirty-five percent, you know, swell rate. I, it's, it's very tough. Uh, the formula that I've used uh, for a lot of projects is twenty-five percent. But I I, you're right, we're not gonna send trucks out there overloaded. Uh, I just want to let the board know and everybody that um, our equipment that we would be loading out with has uh, scales on it and they're accurate within uh, two percent load limit and they're testing on a monthly basis. So we're gonna accurately, uh, the trucks will tell us what their empty weight are and then they'll tell me I can haul thirty ton, I can haul thirty-two ton legal, I can haul thirty-four ton cause all the trucks are not exactly the same. And uh, some are aluminum with liners uh, which makes the trailer lighter so they can haul thirty-five ton. Some of them are steel where they can only haul thirty-two ton. So it's, it's very tough to come to an exact science, but I think that, you know, we could check this math and uh, respond appropriately, just a little bit more time, but I I agree that there's a valid point to check there and and there may be a math error. But um, I don't think it's, I don't think it's double and I concur with Jill that, you know, we need to relook at it, but.
Well, Mr. Durkin, that's.
Marty, may I ask a question? John Durkin, did I hear you say correctly that the trucks have a scale built into the truck?
Uh, no, the equipment that loads it and the um, the trucks all know how much they can haul legally cause wherever they go to pick up material, they have to tell the loader operator how much they can haul legal. So they'll tell us over uh, we have CB chat, CB radios in the trucks and they'll tell the loader operator, I can haul thirty-two point six ton, thirty-three point five ton, whatever it is. And then they'll do their best to load that. It's not an exact science with hydraulic scales. It's accurate within a couple percent now, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
What I was going to say is that um, it's commendable um, that you're um, willing to to reevaluate the calculations. And uh, I think it I, it's important because it's one of the um, I think, primary concerns of the abutters. So um, that would be great. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Nielsen for that as well.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And and John, I I do, I I fully understand where you're coming from, where it's not an exact science. Um, and you know, the the approach that I often take is to look at the bulk, the 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 unprocessed, the weight of the unprocessed and look at how many, you know, based on what you think your average truck can carry, what what you can get out of it. Uh, but, you know, I think, I think uh, you know, the numbers that I presented were based on an assumption that you could carry eighty to eighty-seven thousand pounds. You're still looking at, I would guess, over a thousand more truck trips um, based on this. Uh, and I think, you know, the the point that I would like to make uh, is that, you know, that that's a a pretty considerable increase in the amount of time that would be spent on so, uh, you know, hauling material off. And in, in conjunction with the number of truck trips that are estimated per day, you know, which I think also is probably gonna be very difficult to meet the 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 schedule as a whole, I think will get pushed back. And I think there's the potential to push it back quite a bit. Um, and so, you know, I think that that's the primary thing that I would like to, to point out to the board. Um, and I know that uh, I I had uh, talked with John Cole and I think he was hoping to speak as well. I don't know, uh, Chair Crouch, if if it would be all right to have John Cole uh, step in.
Right, I prefer if I could actually speak to some of the stuff that you had said, if it's possible, Ms. Crouch.
Yes, you you had um, started to make some points, Ms. Mann, so please go ahead and then we'll hear from John Cole.
Thank you, appreciate it. And again, we we are going to redo that number and we will estimate the number of trips because John's pretty com- comfortable that the area is sufficient for him to do the sufficient areas of loading. But nonetheless, we're gonna redo it. Um, relative to, you know, Mr. Nielsen had stated at the beginning, the position that um, GZA had taken in this very first letter. However, that was done um, and and revisited. He simply had said, use the material because it's going to be covered, use the material in the, in the um, other areas of the site. But if uh, Mr. Nielsen had reviewed, and I think you had, subsequent transmissions between GEI and GZA, that's the whole point of the muck pile management and the re- rock reuse program. That had been evaluated and that was part of the entire hydrology discussion, which was actually deemed to be safe to use on site. Um, and with regard to the accelerants, there's absolutely no use of ANFO. So that was another reason why the hydrology discussion um, didn't devolve, but actually evolved into the ability to use the materials on site. I just wanted to make certain that the board understood that that was absolutely incorrect, that that was the initial review and that based on subsequent conversations, the rock reuse was deemed to be um, properly overseen and the muck pile management was accurate and sufficient. Thank you very much.
To 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 my understanding, I I I don't know if I've seen anything that has indic- that has talked about the rock reuse on site after stockpiling in the muck piles. I I haven't seen anything in the blast rock management plan that talks about reuse after construction or reuse during construction, other than managing it in muck piles or. or reuse during construction, other than managing it in muck piles appropriately, sampling the runoff from that, uh, and then making sure that the nitrates are not exceeding.
You need to, I think it's also. You need to review GZA's follow-up letter and it's in there, in addition to GEIs, you just need to review that second letter. But that's all about hydrology, which we discussed, which was discussed and was a rock reuse. So if you go back and look and you can submit something, I think to the board, but I don't think it's worthwhile to discuss it now, because those are the documents that it's in. You just need to look at them.
Yep, we can go back and, and have a look at those.
Sure, I mean, I, I, I understand there's a lot of material, but it is definitely in there. And if you need it, you can email and I can send it to you, Mr. Nielsen, it's not an issue.
That, that might be great, because as you said, there's a lot of material.
That's why when someone doesn't have something, just let me know, I've been trying to manage it, as I know you have too, Ms. Crouch. And I can email people the information as they, as, as needed and as necessary.
Well, it gets confusing, we have emails, letters.
I know.
Statements, you know, so we may inadvertently refer to an email when it's a letter and vice versa. So, yes, if you provide that information to, uh, Mr. Nielsen, I'm sure he would appreciate it and get clarification on that. Because if there is an issue, we should get it, um, confronted, uh, sooner rather than later. And I'm sure you would want to do that as well.
Absolutely, he should just email me and tell me if he can't find it, because I know that we did deliver, but just let me know, you know my email.
Uh, Mr. Cole, did you want to speak at this point?
Yes, if I could, please, um, and thanks, Tom, and thank you, planning board members. And congratulations to you, Marty, on, uh, stepping from the frying pan into the fire.
An accurate description, I'm sure.
So, um, you know, I, you know, I, I honestly, I'm coming from the very amateur, um, just being in a butter. Um, so some of my comments may be off base, but, uh, bear with me for a second. You know, as I review the schedule for the SWIP, um, I find it extremely alarming. Uh, it, it states that we have eight hundred and fifty nine days of construction ahead of us. Uh, when you factor in that those are five, you know, that you need five day work weeks, holidays, rain delays that are required for the blasting. And the export, you end up at five point two years of tree cutting, blasting and destruction. Um, there is a hole in there for three hundred and seventy two days, uh, in the middle, which we're assuming that that's the construction of phase one units. However, there's no time allocated, uh, for the construction of phase two units, which makes the five point two years very conservative. So let's think about this, uh, it's, uh, five years of massive disruptions due to huge trucks, um, rolling down the road, noise levels that match rock concerts and the end of quiet walks on, uh, Chabaco Woods and so much more. Now let's be clear, this is not a NIMBY unit, this is, uh, this is not, um, you know, anything to do with, it's, it certainly is NIMBY and that it's, it affects us. But it's also a town issue and a regional issue, as we've now found out that this, all these trucks are rolling through the center of Ipswich. So let's consider a few things for a minute, the Prue was built in three and a half years, so it's interesting that this is going to be over five and a half years. Um, I don't think that a project like this has ever been attempted in this town, and if it has, I sure would love to know about it and how it happened. This project is proposed within a very quiet neighborhood averaging forty to fifty DBs off a small scenic road abutting Hamilton's largest and most popular open space, Chabaco Woods, and it's a few feet from a butters. Uh, the Cur's House, just as a reference, is only thirty, is, is about three hundred feet from, uh, unit thirty four, so it's not far away. Um, so that means that for fi- for over five years, um, there will be thousands of very large, and we can debate how many trucks forever, very large and noisy trucks that will be jamming our streets, messing up the school bus schedules, interrupting traffic flow and limiting access. We do, and we do now know that the route for some of these trucks is going to be through, through the center of Ipswich. Um, and I'm sure they're going to be really excited about that. Um, during the actual construction phase, there will be years of pounding, pouring, paving, piling, uh, associated with the construction of the fifty units in a dense, highly constrained, highly constricted space with a single point of access and unshielded at ground level for s- uh, by any significant vegetation. For over five years, those with young children, those that work from home, those that have horses, those that have families that are sensitive or animals that are sensitive to noise, will have to contend with this massive disruption in their lives. Some will move, some will relocate and some will seek alternative workspaces, um, at great personal expense. For over five years, the residents of Hamilton, Manchester and Essex will have to wake up every day with concerns about whether their water is polluted, whether their wells are contaminated and live with the stink of foul, the foul diesel in the air. For over five years, the citizens of Hamilton will have to face another day to witness destruction of what they cherish. They will have to listen to the trees fall, the land explode and the trucks haul it all away. And for what? A two percent increase in tax revenue? Is that what Hamilton's brand of open space is worth? Is that what the residents of this town are worth? Those of us that have lived here and been part of this community for years? It, you know, it's a question that the planning board needs to ask. And I thank you for your consideration and would like to pass this on to Elizabeth Ransom, who will discuss some of the risks associated with the current construction plan. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We follow up with Jonathan Cole's comment?
Uh, yes, just briefly, uh, uh, where, um.
Yeah. I think.
A little shy of ten o'clock and the boy does have other business to attend to, but yes, please.
I think massive disruption is, is another wild overstatement. I, I think we've proven, you know, meeting after meeting of all the measures we're taking to prevent disruption and, and with innovative practices and good contractors and things of na- things that are natural to the normal construction activities, um, in today's world. I think massive disruption is a wild overstatement. Also, that the five years that Jonathan Cole keeps on talking about, that the math with five years doesn't make a lot of sense, that, you know, five days in a week, there'd be two hundred and sixty days in a year, eight hundred and fifty nine divided by two, sixty three years. So I think we've got a little math issue on, on Jonathan Cole that I think needs to be corrected. Thank you, Ms. Crouch.
So you have to actually include in there that there's, there's twelve, twelve days a year that have to go into holidays and you lose roughly thirty percent of your time. It rains thirty percent of the year, all right, in Massachusetts. So thirty percent of your export time, when this, when the materials are supposed to be protected and thirty percent of the time when you're blasting, you have to add those incremental times into this. And the other thing that I did add, and I will add this, because you're planning on a one hundred percent flawless, perfect schedule, I did add, you're correct, thanks for bringing this up, ten percent of time for failure or time that things, it's, it's not going to happen the way you plan it. I know that everything that we hear from you guys is that everything will happen without any failure, that there will be one hundred percent perfect performance, that no piece of equipment is going to break down, no, eh, eh, nothing is going to go wrong, everything will be absolutely perfect. The streets will be quiet, there won't be any cars on the road, I'll be able to pull out of my driveway and there won't be any trucks there, that all of this will be absolutely perfect and flawless. And I am sorry, but I cannot believe this, when I look at hundreds of pages of detailed notes of all of the performance things that have to take place in perfect sync to have this happen, that this is going to, I mean, hell, they can't even put up, well, I won't go there. This is very challenging and you know it's very challenging, so no one's going to tell me that this is going to come off completely flawless with never one single mistake. And so I did add ten percent into that for those times when a truck breaks down, when fuel isn't there on time.
And Ms. Crouch, I definitely understand his, Mr. Cole's frustration. I mean, he's going to be living next to a site that's going to be under construction. He's upset because he lives in, in a, in a, what is currently a non-developed lot. But just like when his lot was developed, there was construction and disruption, this is going to occur. And I agree that it's on a larger scale, but it's not massive and you're not going to have that volume of trucks every day. You'll have some and it will be somewhat disruptive, but this large tract of land is available for, 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 for development and that's why it's this board's responsibility to make sure we limit our construction hours, we don't impact the school bus routes, we, we make sure we don't hurt the neighbors, we make sure we mitigate to the extent possible. I mean, the frustration is there, we can't change that. And of course, there's going to be hiccups, we're humans, right? Everybody's a human, but it's not going to be of the massive scale that is being suggested. Uh, eh, eh, and if we can do something to help Mr. Cole, we one hundred percent will, you know, but we, we are going to go forward and this land is going to be developed, whether it's developed as this or it's developed as something else. The, the landowners have made that abundantly clear, thank you.
And if I could add to that, Jill, I, I, you know, we, we are professionals and we do this every day. We have many construction projects going on and, uh, we meet our timetables. So, um, it's not like this is the, our first rodeo. Um, so we, we learn and we execute, um, in a very efficient way, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Ransom, would you like to proceed?
Sure, can, can you hear me okay? Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Thank you, Ms. Crouch, and congratulations on your recent, uh, new appointment, um. I am going to turn us back for a moment to, um, both the SWIP document and the, uh, blast management plan. Um, we reviewed both of those documents. I recognize that the blast ma- management plan is, is fairly recent and is, um, kind of submitted more as a complete document. And the SWIP is, um, by nature, not only older, but, but also intentionally sort of incomplete. But there are some inconsistencies between the documents and some, um, things we wanted to point out that I think could augment those plans that would help the, the town. Um, and recognizing the lateness of the hour and the fact that you do have additional board business, I'm happy to kind of limit some of what I say, give you the highlights and provide you a written summary, um, to go, go into the record and allow you to, to, to address some of the finer points. I don't think I want to go through a page by page through the document right now, that's not a great use of everyone's time.
I think that's an excellent idea and I think the other board members and the public would probably agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, so I, I'm going to start with the, the blasting plan, um. Uh, you know, just real quick, hi- kind of going back to a previous discussion, I think there seems to be a lot of confusion over what's the length of the blasting period, what's the length of the monitoring period? Um, and, and I think it'd be super helpful if the blasting plan provided something similar to what the SWIP does, where it, um, describes in greater detail, uh, sort of the interim steps of, of what's the blasting and the monitoring period, that's just kind of an aside. Um, relative to the, um, parameters proposed, there's a table one on page two. Um, and it just makes a reference to the EPA drinking water parameters. It's not clear if that's including both the primary and the secondary parameters. I, I think it'd be really beneficial for everyone who's reviewing the plan to understand, um, both the sample collection methodology and the testing methodology for each of the parameters listed and what will constitute acceptable or valid data. Uh, typically, when we produce plans like this, we, we list out, there's a, you know, usually a, an EPA method number or an SOP attached that says, this is how we're going to do this data collection and how the lab's going to analyze the data. So we know that the data that's being received is meaningful. So, you know, on the, the, the thought of the data, like, who's getting that data? How often are they getting that data? And, and who, who receives that data ultimately has the authority to, to change anything about the blasting or the construction if something's exceeded. I think, um, GEI had done a, a good job of putting in a table showing this, for example, the standards, um, for the, the nitrate concentrations, um, and, and a, you know, establishing that if, if a certain action level happens, we're going to take action, but, but giving the board some additional information on the steps for that happening would allow you to understand, well, all right, how quickly do we make corrections, who makes the corrections? Um, you know, some of this does in fact dovetail with what's in the, in the SWIP in some cases, but, but some additional detail, I think, um, from GEI in this plan would go a long way to assuring some protections for the town. Um, I, I think, um, one of the things that concerns the residents is that while the plan right now is very focused on the blasting, it's, it's not just the blasting, but the entirety of the work that goes on during that blasting period that can cause impact, right? We have construction-related vehicles, and this is all, you know, stuff that is detailed in the SWIP, but we have construction-related vehicles that will be onsite that, um, use diesel fuel, for example. Is there testing that we should be doing that should be added to this plan that helps us understand whether there's potential impacts from the construction vehicles themselves? Um, you know, the SWIP also mentions fertilizers. Um, there are compounds that can be monitored either frequently or infrequently to help you get a, a handle on that. And, and so, um, you know, there are things that could be added to that table one that would provide more information to the town on what impacts are occurring. Um, and be tied to some of the pollutants that the SWIP does a good job of identifying. Um, it's also, uh, noted that, you know, we, we do have a lot of surface wa- water that surrounds the construction area. The, the plan right now is very focused on, uh, the groundwater wells, which is, is a good thing, but it's probably pretty easy while we're out there doing the groundwater sampling to cor- collect some surface water samples and understand what might be going to, uh, the surface water. And, you know, in the event of a release, um, you know, if there was something that occurred, um, you know, one of the fastest ways for polluted water to enter the recharge area is, um, you know, via some of the adjacent surface water features. So, um, whether you're adding a, a, a well off in the direction of the irrigation pond and the stream that's, that's over by that septic system, or whether you're just simply monitoring some of those surface water features. Um, you know, I think this, this, um, blast rock handling and management plan could be augmented. Um, I, I think one of the, the, the things that, um, concerns the residents is obviously their own wells, right? We, we, we all know that much of Chabaco Road has a private well. The plan, um, seems to continue to monitor their wells, addressing that concern, but not necessarily provide the same timeline for monitoring the monitoring wells that are prior to the homeowner wells. So one of the things that you want the monitoring network to do is serve as a canary in the coal mine, right? You want to understand what's happening to the groundwater before it gets to somebody's drinking water supply. So I think in consideration of a final version of this plan, there should be some thought given to the timeline for monitoring the, the well network. You might sort of continue the well network longer than what you're doing at the homeowner's house. Because in, in, you know, in the, in the long term, if it, if it shows up in the well network, you have the chance to make the correction before it bothers a water supply. And that's the whole reason you put those wells in and, and have the network to begin with. So revisiting the table one again to look at the durations of sampling and, and how long we keep that well network in place, I think is an important component of the plan. Um, the other, um, points that I, I guess, of, of the, on the blast plan, it, it does make note of a monitoring well one oh eight. I don't know where, how that well is going to be installed without either crossing a, a wetland or crossing in through the conservation land. So, um, I know through the Conservation Commission process, there are no additional wetland crossings other than what's already proposed for the, you know, septic and, and the roadway. So, um, I'm hoping the applicant will be able to provide some additional detail as to how they get to that well. Um, and then the, kind of my last point relative to the, the blasting plan is, um, there is a, a, a discussion about action levels for compounds other than, um, the nitrates. And, um, usually when we set an action level, we try to do that after we understand a little bit more about what the background conditions are, because you don't want to, i- if, if the variability for a compound is significant and it bounces maybe a, eh, into a condition that's already violating standards for that compound, you'd rather know that before you set your action level. So I guess, um, you know, I, I just noted that on, um, uh, a early portion of the, I guess it's page three of the, of the plan, um, they talk about. a early portion of the, I guess it's page three of the, of the plan, they talk about setting a, a concentration of, you know, three standard deviations of mean. And that may or wind up being fine, or it may wind up being not fine. And it would probably be helpful to revisit that notion following some collection of background data. And I, I, I think that serves the applicant as well as it serves the town. Because we may already have a condition for some of these parameters that exceeds, you know, the, the applicable EPA or state standard. I'm happy to pause there before going on to something about the SWIP, if that helps.
I was just going to say, may I, Ms. Crouch? Just, it'll be, okay. So I, I, a lot of those suggestions are fantastic, Ms. Ransom, and, you know, we're going to incorporate a lot of them. But with regard to the SWIP and to the GZA and the monitoring wells, it's two separate items. The whole hydrology component and the monitoring, that is all things that we agreed to with GZA, which was in that, those subsequent documents that, you know, basically reinforced the monitoring wells. And all of those monitoring wells are located outside the buffer, except for the one that is on, basically on the street, which is within the buffer. And what everybody needs to understand is the monitoring wells are like a little inch diameter. And if we have to apply, we will, but no full well, it's in the street where the one buffer is. All the other monitoring wells are outside. GZA did move them because the original locations were in, actually located in the wetland. So we moved them to the outskirts of them and they've been located to be able to test all areas and to do exactly what you think, you know, test that groundwater and test the runoff. Because what it's going to test in that pond right near the muck pile is actually the water coming out of the muck pile. So it's a good idea and we did adopt that. And are going to look at the canary in, in the mine, in the mineshaft because it is appropriate and reasonable. And that's why we set the levels at below what the trigger points are for the EPA and DEP to say it's bad. Because we'll stop immediately and react. That's the point, is to protect the environment and protect the homeowners. And those wells are in place during the entire process as far as construction. So they are, the timeline is actually provided again. In that conversation we had during hydrology, that's already been said, agreed to, and that wasn't really even part of the SWIP for us. But I, I do like the idea of, you know, the different action levels and, you know, we'll, we'll talk to the other parties. But as I said, that was the hydrology component, not SWIP. So that's it, Ms. Crouch. Those are my quick responses.
Well, yes, and, and Ms. Ransom is going to be submitting some written materials. And at that point, you will have the opportunity to respond to them in writing or in, in some other fashion. So if you would like to address the SWIP now, Ms. Ransom?
Yes, thank you. I'm trying to, I, I have a sort of a longer list, so I'm trying to just maybe hit some highlights because I think it's probably easier for some of these details to just go through the, a written back and forth. You know, there are some things in the SWIP that I think really is more just a clarification or just some things that were, were incomplete. And so recognizing obviously that some things are going to have to remain incomplete until you're closer to construction. I think there are other things that probably would, would help the, you know, the board and the, the citizens understand a little bit more about your process if we could get this more up to, up to date. One of the things though, that I'd like to kind of go back to, as I know earlier, Brent, you had mentioned that like turbidity is not required, obviously, under the SWIP through the EPA process. And I think there's a little bit of confusion on that in, in the sense that you're clearly, you know, stating that not only is sediment a pollutant that you're listing in the SWIP, but also it's not clear to me how the monitoring, the bedrock monitoring wells are being installed. But would there be a need to discharge sediment-laden groundwater, which isn't checked in the SWIP, in order to install the wells? Because I know, you know, commonly when we install a bedrock well, you know, you're bringing up sediment-laden water that you then have to kind of discharge. And so there are things that, you know, as this has evolved from where you started in the, in the planning of construction, are there things that might need to get revisited in this SWIP as it stands right now to address some of the, the new things we've been talking about?
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Ransom, that's a, that's a great comment and we can work with GEI to, to incorporate that. You know, I, I'm not a geologist. We, we don't have geologists on staff. So we'll have to work with the, the consultants to, to make sure that's incorporated in the SWIP. And, and if you have other things that you want to include, we're all for making sure that the SWIP is extremely robust. It was peer reviewed by the, by TEC. So we'd, we'd welcome any comments or incorporations that you would like to see that you see normal in, in your projects. You know, not specific to this one, but, but maybe ones that you, you find that Ransom has as a, as a, as an example. We are, we're not opposed to that.
That's, that's excellent. And, and, and perhaps, you know, if, if maybe we can revisit this topic at, at a subsequent meeting, rather than kind of prolong this discussion since you've agreed to communicate with one another. My own observation of the SWIP was it, it, it really was a draft. And it's, it appeared to me, although it had very robust features, it, it, it could, you know, it obviously was a work in progress. So I think if, if, if Mr. Durkin and, and Mr. Cole are willing to listen to your suggestions and, and maybe amend it, that would be.
Madam Chair, it is, yeah, I got to say, it's the first time I've submitted a SWIP during the planning board process before. Typically, it's a construction document. It's done with the contractor. That is why it is in, in very draft form. There are some, some things that we just can't complete. So it is a little unorthodox to be discussing a SWIP at a, at a planning board hearing. Not that we're opposed to it, but I, I think Elizabeth and, and I can, can work offline to, to make sure that that SWIP incorporates things that are reasonable.
Is that agreeable to you?
I think that makes a lot of sense and I will provide some of the written feedback to the board and everyone as a kickoff. And then perhaps, you know, following that, it, it makes sense to just have a, have a phone conversation about how we, you know, put in the things that can be done now that help inform the board's decision versus sweat over things that really are part of the construction process. But, you know, just things like how many acres are open at once? Those are things that you have started to think about with your construction management. And there's a place for that in the SWIP and we can update the SWIP to reflect it. And, and those are things that I think are pertinent to the board. So I, I will be happy to, you know, follow up with a memo and then take it from there. I, I believe, you know, given that, I would, I would love to let Deb Ellison come on next. I know she has some questions or comments.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Through you, Madam Chair. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street Gloucester. Many of my comments were already discussed and I won't belabor those. But I do believe there's some information that you do need in order to further evaluate this project. I do not believe that you have received a detailed cut and fill plan that supports the construction duration estimates or the truck traffic. And I think that's something that's important for you to have. As well as has been mentioned are the no air quality testing protocols have been mentioned, or whether or not there are going to be some, and I think there needs to be, given the number, amount of equipment that is on this site.
Ms. Ellison, can you come closer to your microphone, please?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Little bit, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. The other thing is I have a question for Attorney Mann. And the letter that you were referring to that changed Mr. Emery's requirements for the blasting, was that a letter after his January 3rd, 2022 letter?
Yes, it was, I think it was actually an email, is my recollection. It's just like Ms. Crouch said, email letter, which one? I believe it was an email that was attached to a comment letter from GEI. And then it was discussed at Infinitum during the hydrology meeting, meeting as well. So it was both.
I would certainly appreciate you providing that information to us because.
Yeah, you definitely, you should have gotten it. If you didn't, of course, I'm going to provide it.
Was it the, excuse me, was it the February 4th communication? And I think it was an attachment to a letter that you submitted to the planning board.
I'm going to check. I, I, you, I apologize, Ms. Crouch. I can't remember how it was submitted. I only know that it was, I, I'm confident it was an email. And I apologize and I'll get it out, but I, it's just, I just can't recollect. I know it was an email.
Okay, I would, I would appreciate that.
Of course, and no, no problem at all. I, I will get it to you.
Thank you. And I don't have any further comments. My comments were addressed by others. Thank you.
Does any, we have a hand up? Pat, would you?
Ms. Falcon, yeah.
My eyesight's better than mine, the younger I am.
Hello, thank you. I appreciate the board taking the time. And as I think my hand is the last one raised, I will indeed be quick. It is past my bedtime already. And I do have some overlap with people have said things already, so I will be quick. My name is Kate Gerard. I'm a resident of Partridge Berry Lane. And I am a property owner of that blast proposed project. I, I basically just want to bring visibility to the fact that, you know, we've heard often from people who live on Chabaco Road, but there are many, many layers of people who are concerned and who are impacted. It's, it's more than Chabaco. It's Partridge Berry Lane. It's more than the Butters. It's more than the people affected by traffic. It's more than the people by the blasting noise. More of the people who are concerned about the wetlands and the wildlife and the wells and the drinking water. That there are, you know, I believe, layers and layers of people that have concerns. And I think it's just based on the sheer scale and volume of the work that's being proposed. And while I appreciate all the things that I've heard tonight, I learned a, a lot about the various efforts that are being taken that were described during the need to reduce the concerning elements of the destruction of the ledge and the land to accommodate the build, even with the new numbers, I'm still concerned. When I hear 78 days of blasting and a phase one plus 26 more, I'm thinking about 100 days of blasting. And as, you know, John mentioned, if that's five days a week and you add up, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, I work from home. As more than ever do people right now work from home. And I'm wondering, you know, about opening my windows for six months. Am I not going to be able to open my windows for six months? What will that be? What will the impact? The, you know, 45 to 50 trucks a day, you know, these numbers, although I understand that they're being reduced. I think that any project that's maxing out the 50 allowable units is going to bring a high degree of disruption. Even with the best intentions and even with, under good circumstances, as has been, has been mentioned. I know that any project or construction that I've ever been involved with always ends up being more. More time, more money, more noise than you ever imagined it's going to be. I did review the relevant planning board regulations as they relate to the specific type of project. And I've found that central to those regulations were the planning board's imperative to look at the impacts of the neighborhood. And I also saw the term harmony used several times. This project has created a significant discord within the community. And I would ask you to please not underestimate the number of people and the residents who will be impacted and who are concerned. It's been a long process. We're still here. We're still engaged and we're still concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we all agree?
Sorry, I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay. Well, thank you everyone for your participation here. And at this juncture, I think I would like to speak with Ms. Mann and ascertain what she envisions for our next meeting.
Poor, thank you very much, Ms. Crouch. I mean, at this point, i- i- unless the board members, you know, have the need for additional information, my guess is at the next board meeting, we should kind of go over any deficits and then try to work through the purposes and findings of the senior housing bylaw. I know that we have some work to do with Ransom relative to the SWIP and we will do so. And I'll send them that information that just confirms, you know, GZA's rock reuse pot, um, plan, which again, was discussed in detail during that hydrology meeting. And, and, you know, relative to the other things, I know that the, the opposition is, is actually stated something about not having a decent cut and fill. It's all contained in the blast plan. So I would strongly suggest they review that final blast plan that was reviewed by, you know, GE, GZA. And, and, and that's pretty telling. And then I, I think that would be a good plan, Ms. Crouch. And maybe if the board members have lingering questions about something or someone else does, if they present them in writing, I can then get it back to you before the next board meeting so that, you know, we can kind of make the next board meeting more productive and not have questions that'll come from all, all parts. You know, if there's lingering questions. How does that sound to you?
That, that sounds very plausible. I, I was contemplating for the next meeting, an opportunity for you and any other interested party to submit whatever other evidence or documentation anyone felt should be before the board. But if you don't think that it's, that you have sufficient, sufficient information or you've completed the bulk of, of the information you intend to submit, we can possibly add to, to the agenda for the next meeting. But what I thought was an opportunity for basically all parties, all interested parties to, to present any additional information, not argument, but information, factual information to the board. So it, it appears that you, you don't have any real additional information to submit other than addressing some of the issues that we have raised tonight about the number of trucks and also some of the information that's going to be exchanged between the ransom engineers and, and granite engineering. Is that correct?
That is, unless the board has a question about information that was already submitted that they want supplemented. Yes.
I have a quick question. So you've made a couple of design changes. One is recently moving unit 31, which changes grades and topography and probably a little bit of drainage and stormwater management pieces. Will you be submitting revised drawings to reflect those changes?
I have to talk to Mr. Cole because we are, but it's actually an improvement. I don't, I think that the grade change was actually, Brent, I'm going to, you know what, Mr. Poor? I, I have to refer to, to Mr. Cole on this one. So could you please just respond to Mr. Poor?
Yeah, if it's, if it's the, the board would like to see all that information, then, then that's fine. You can imagine on our end, you know, we're, we're juggling a lot of cha- juggling a lot of changes and the big plan set. So, you know, if we, if we've nailed down the layout, then we certainly will a revised plan set here as, as soon as feasible.
I, I think it would help the board to see what the implications are around grading and drainage with those most recent changes.
Okay.
Do you think those specific, those specific things will be able to, the board will, will understand those specific things? They're, they're very minor, minor changes. But if the board feels like they need them.
Can you tell, you said minor changes. Does that mean something like 1% or 2%? Or you're talking like 10%? That might make a difference.
You know, certainly not 10%. We just moved one unit, but we, we did shorten up the driveways. So in order to, to put together a full plan set, you know, we've got to go back and, and touch every single, you know, sheet that's on the, on the plan. You may not notice any of the changes, you know. We're talking about a foot here, a foot there. There's really no substantial. And, and we certainly will provide all, all those plans. It's just, it, it's going to take a little bit.
But is it fair to say, Mr. Poor, that what you really would like to see is the, the grading and drainage plan? If you, if we show those changes, would that be satisfactory? Because I think Mr. Cole's talking about, you know, the 40-something page set.
No, I'm not talking about all the micro details around driveways and things like that. I'm talking about, I, I believe there's fairly significant, you've even said so yourself, changes to the amount of blasting and the amount of removals by the, by the change of unit 31. It would be helpful for the board to see a little more detail on that. Right now. It would be helpful for the board to see a little more detail on that. Right now, we just have numbers. We don't have topography. We don't have drainage.
No, I understand what you're looking for. So I think that we definitely can get that because Mr. Cole was concerned that it would be those micro changes. But I understand and, and it's relevant, even though it's an improvement, you'd like to see them.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, we understand and that's a deliverable, um, we'll provide.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question? Didn't, um, the drawings you submitted, uh, a week ago? Didn't they show those changes?
In, in two dimensional form, Larry.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, before I, um, make any additional comments, I would like to know, um, how the board members, um, would like to see the agenda put together for the next meeting. Does anyone have any ideas on that?
So, question, Marnie. Uh, I just want to be clear on, are, are we, uh, is there, are you expecting that board members are going to be submitting written questions to the applicant?
No, that was something that, uh, Ms. Mann, uh, suggested, but, um, I, I have not adopted that. I don't know if any of the board members, uh, like that idea. Uh, it, it's, it, it, it might be too unfocused and, and too unwieldy, but, um, one thing I was thinking is that, that it might be very helpful for, um, the applicant to just summarize the evidence it's presented and any member of the public or save Chabaco Trails and Watershed to point to information that they have submitted. Um, as you know, we, the planning board has, uh, what's been captioned a bylaw data summary that certainly, um, is germane to, um, our discussions down the road, but we, we, we could go through that and just have up on the table what information is before us. No argument, no discussion of purposes, no discussion of findings, just an assessment of where we stand with respect to the evidence submitted, not just by the applicant, but by any other interested party. And after we've had that, um, discussion, uh, the following meeting, uh, the board, uh, could in a sense take, and I, and I use this, I think the lawyers among us will appreciate it, closing arguments by the parties in interest, you know, going through, um, the purposes and the findings and, and, and putting forth their positions with reference to the evidence that we all agree is part of the record. And then following that meeting, uh, the board, um, would begin its deliberations uh, without any, um, interruption from, um, the applicant, the public. And obviously, there are going to be open meetings and at, at probably the end, uh, people can, um, make comments, but I, I, I envision the board having its discussion without interruption. So, um, please, anyone who, uh, has a, an opinion as to what I just said, uh, please, uh, let me know and, and we'll try and reach consensus on where we go. But, uh, that was one idea I had.
I would support.
I found that very confusing. This whole statement, I, it just went on and on and on forever. I'm lost in what you're talking about.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not asking you to repeat it. Please don't.
So.
But I'm just telling you, I'm, it was way too many words.
So let me just, let me just jump in and ask a question and I want Patrick Raffet to, uh, opine here. Typically, after, you know, the data has been presented and final arguments, uh, then the hearings are closed and then the board, um, will construct its findings and recommendations as opposed to having that as a part of a public discussion. But I could be wrong on that and Patrick, I'd like to opine on that.
Right, and I, I, excuse me.
You could craft the points relative to the conditions, the findings, et cetera, through the discussion process prior to closing the hearing.
Okay.
We did that on Patton Ridge, you might remember a number of years ago. Uh, but then other projects, we have, uh, closed the hearing, uh, and then, uh, made all of the decision uh, elements, findings and text, uh, after the hearing was closed.
Patrick, let me, let me clarify, because I assumed that the hearing would be closed. But because we have open meeting laws, the public is entitled to listen to our discussions. And that's what I was referring to. And I don't anticipate input from anyone while we're having our deliberations, but by the same token, we can't, um.
No, 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 I get it. I get it, I get it. Uh, that's what I was confused about because it sounded like we were going to be having an open discussion with the public and the applicant.
No, 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 no. It's just that I recognize they have to be present and they're, and they are entitled to listen to.
No, 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 I, yeah. So I think.
Marty, can I offer one comment on that, Ms. Robenstein, Town Council?
Oh, yes, okay.
I'm above you on the screen. I'm not sure I'm showing up for you.
No, I'm, I'm not finding you. Oh, no.
You know, I'm, I'm not, um, you know, I'm, I'm not offering specifically, you know, a kind of a recommendation on which way you go. I just want to note that we do often recommend you keep the public hearing portions open till closer to when you're ready to take a final vote, especially on, on bigger projects, only because sometimes conversations come up about conditions or items that need to be clarified. And once you close the public hearing, the discussion's really only for the board, not with the public and not with the applicant. So just something to keep in mind. Um, you know, kind of at what point you're really ready to proceed with just the board without any additional back and forth from the public and the applicant. As you're thinking more along the lines of conditions and, and items like that, sometimes it can help to keep the public hearing open a little bit longer, but it, it's a balance. And I just wanted to offer a comment on that.
Right, and, and, uh, and I appreciate what you're saying, you know, and, and it's a question that I had in my mind. At what point do you close these hearings? And I thought that, um, after we had closing arguments and the board proceeded with its discussions, um, I, I, I could see a scenario where someone, uh, uh, someone could, um, request an opportunity to respond to some of the discussion points. And it, you know, in the discretion of the board, we could then, uh, invite, uh, public participation back. Um, uh, if, if necessary, or, uh, would that be something that, that, uh, would be appropriate legally from your perspective, Ms. Stein?
So long as you've kept the public hearing open. And, and that's kind of the point. It, and we can, we can talk offline, you know, as you can.
I think that might be, uh, appropriate, but I, I would really like, um, everyone to reach consensus on what the record is comprised of. And I see that, um, as, as something that we can do at our next meeting. And I don't think that there's a problem having, uh, a short meeting, uh, once in a while. So if it's not something that lasts four hours, that, that might be appreciated. And then, uh, then the following meeting, uh, would involve, um, really the, the parties making their best pitch to the, uh, planning board, uh, about, uh, the special permit. And, uh, obviously that each, um, presentation could take anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half or more. So I anticipate a full-fledged argument from both sides on that. Um, so again, I welcome any comments anyone would have.
Yeah, I, I support that, uh, Marty, um, that strategy going forward, just to get everything on the table uh, at the next meeting so that we do have the full picture. And even getting, if possible, get the, uh, get the grading plan up, uh, so that we're, we're looking at the final product that we have to evaluate uh, going forward. And then the following meeting, I think it's a good idea to have closing, uh, remarks from both sides.
I support that as well.
I would support you. And then, and then there's a third meeting after that, which is internal deliberations.
Yes, and, 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 and obviously that, that we can discuss, uh, how we want to structure our internal deliberations at, at a different time. Um, but, uh, as long as everyone is agreed, um, about that, um, I, I would entertain a motion to continue, um, the public hearing on the, uh, application for the special permit and the stormwater management um, from April twenty-first to May third, two thousand two at seven PM via Zoom.
Marty, before we get to that, I did want to mention quickly, uh, rather than read all of the letters that I've gotten uh, within the last two weeks or rather since the last meeting, uh, I would like to mention them and the dates, just so people are aware that they're part of the file. Uh, I received, uh, a letter, email from Darcy Dale. Um, yesterday, uh, received a, uh, a letter, uh, from David Allen George. Uh, on, uh, Tuesday, uh, received an email from Karen Gerch uh, on April the twentieth. Uh, another, uh, email letter from Susan Dillon, uh, from Essex. Uh, email letter from Todd Norton. And email letter from Margaret Hothem, Hothem, uh, Hamilton.
H O T H E M, Hothem.
Yes. Uh, and email letter from Chris Davis, uh, who's spoken tonight. Uh, and email letter from Robert Smallman. And, uh, an email letter today from Jim Younger. Uh, these are all in opposition.
Uh, Patrick, I know, uh, uh, that we, that you transmitted to us, uh, the letter from David Allen George. Uh, I recognize the name Margaret, uh, Hothem, you said?
Yeah.
Hothem. Uh, I have the letter.
He lives on Woodside.
I have the letter from Chris Davis and a letter from Jim Younger, but you said Robert. I didn't catch the last name.
Smallman. Smallman, yes.
Okay, so if you could transmit to the board, Darcy Dale's letter, Karen Birch, Susan Dillon, Todd Norton and Robert Smallman. And I think, I think you had transmitted the others to us.
We'll add that I had responded to a number of those as well, so.
Uh, and I, and I think if you look at the, um, the data summary, I have a list of all the correspondence. And I did indicate, um, the correspondence to which you responded. So, um, with respect to that data summary, it is a bit pertinent to our next meeting. So if, if in preparing that document, you see that anything is omitted, you should, um, let Patrick know and we can add it to that document. And, um, if, um, something should be removed, which I suspect that shouldn't be the case, but you could also, um, let us know. And then, of course, in putting that document together, there's a lot of overlap with some of the information. So, um, it may be that you would want to see some of the, um, the submittals, uh, rearranged a little bit or, you know, put some more. So, and, and any of those things you can transmit to Patrick uh, for the board's consideration. And that, that goes for, for Save Chabaco Trails and any other, any other, uh, information that has been submitted. So, um, we're, we're, I am, I am, I am receptive to receiving that information. So.
And I will, I, I, I did do, in one of my letters, Ms. Crouch, I actually gone through all of the provisions of the bylaw and just kind of referenced all the direct evidence. Because you said to summarize, what I'm probably going to do is take that letter and then redesign it so that I'll identify the materials and, and try to do it in that way. Because the easiest way to identify the material is relative to what you're going to be considering, sort of like what you've done here and in that initial rubric. So, um, I'm not going to make arguments. I'm not going to do that, but I'll present the evidence.
Right, no, it agreed. And, and you, I'm sure you'll find it helpful when you do go to do your arguments, prepare your arguments. And that's what I'm hoping, um, will be the outcome. And it will benefit the applicant, but I think it will also benefit members of the public if they choose to participate in this. And it certainly will be, benefit the board when we go forward with our discussions. So, Patrick, do you have anything else before we entertain a motion to continue?
No, ma'am, I do not.
So, um, do I, do I, do I hear a motion to continue the, the, uh, hearing on the special permit and the stormwater management permit?
Sound moved.
Can you just clarify the date and, and time again?
Yes, it's May third, twenty-two, twenty-two at seven PM via Zoom.
Thank you.
Sound moved. Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Um, Beth Herr?
Aye.
Emil?
Emil Dahlquist, aye.
Rick?
Rick Mitchell, aye.
Richard?
Richard? Richard Boroff, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Bill Wheaton?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
And Marnie Crouch, aye.
Marty, can I just clarify, because where Beth is new, um, I know this is just a motion to continue, but she really probably is just going to not vote on anything on this application. And we should just have the folks vote that are, um, voting on the application. So maybe, I think it's Nick?
Uh, no, it's Pat Norton. So we're going to.
I'm sorry, that's, sorry, Pat.
With apologies, Beth, we're going to strike your vote.
Sorry.
It's okay. No, good point. Uh, I'm glad you're here. Uh, so Pat Norton, how do you vote on the motion to continue?
I'll, I'll carry Beth's vote. No vote, aye as well. Pat Norton, aye.
So, uh, we'll see you all on May third. And at this juncture, I will announce that, uh, I'm going to be asking Emil Dahlquist as the clerk to conduct the meeting. I am very hopeful that I can attend the meeting, but I will be doing so from La Palma in the Canary Islands. So there is some chance that my internet connection will fail and I will not be able to attend. And so that's why I want to make sure that, that Emil is on board, uh, to conduct the meeting. Um, and, and, uh, if all goes well at midnight, I will be joining the meeting, but, uh, I want to ensure it's success in case i- if I have any difficulties. So.
Ms. Crouch, can I ask, have you ever missed a meeting during this hearing?
No, I have not.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
No.
Thank you.
So thank you, everyone. And now we'll, um, uh, proceed with board business.
Marty, if you don't mean me, I'm going to hop off as well.
That's fine.
All right, thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Yes. So I think, uh, actually, um, did everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes from the March fifteenth meeting?
No.
No.
Yes.
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 Go ahead and, uh, but anyway, go ahead.
Okay, um, does anyone have any, uh, comments or questions or edits or anything of that nature with respect to those minutes?
Yeah, you just, I, I would make at the end, uh, where you noted the chair, um, did not, um, uh, close the meeting, that the remaining people on the Zoom call took a vote to formally close the meeting.
We could add that, but I, I, I wondered about that, Rick. And, and, you know, I, I because the YouTube video ended, so I didn't know whether, I didn't know the status of the meeting at that point. I guess we were all on Zoom, but the YouTube cut off. So I can make that change easily.
Yeah, no, Patrick, Patrick told me, uh, I, I learned afterwards that I did fail to do that, but that there were either four or five people left on the Zoom call. And somebody noted that that hadn't been done, so that those members did vote to close the, close the meeting, just so that the record does recall.
Yeah.
That it was formally closed.
Right. I'll try and do that. I don't know if I, I, I don't know actually, you know, because it wasn't recorded, who actually moved, uh, to close the meeting, uh, and who seconded it. But, but I will, I will endeavor to do that. And, and perhaps working with Patrick, we can get that done. No problem.
I will, uh, I'll check the actual Zoom recording rather than the YouTube.
Okay.
HWPM recording. It should be there. I'll write it up and send it to you.
Now, any other, uh, discussion or, um, comments, questions? Do we want to go ahead then and, uh, uh, approve those minutes? Do we want to go ahead then and, uh, uh, approve those minutes subject to the correction that Rick requested?
Yes, I'm making a motion that we, go ahead, Rick.
Okay. I've moved that we approve the minutes, uh, as amended. And corrected.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, um, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Beth, you're not entitled to vote on this, sorry. Um, Emile?
Emil Dalquist, aye.
Rick?
Rick Mitchell, aye.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Bill?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Uh, Pat? Oh, no. Uh, Patrick, is Pat Norton entitled to vote on the minutes? In Beth's place?
Uh, no.
No.
No, this is no.
Marnie Crouch, aye. So all those entitled to vote, um, have voted, uh, to approve the minutes, um, from the March fifteenth, uh, meeting. So at this juncture, I, I would ask if anybody had any other business, uh, before the board. Um, Patrick, do you have anything? Um, that you can, uh, inform us about?
Uh, the master plan effort continues. Uh, we have a, uh, website up. We have information on. Uh, the town's website as well. Uh, there's a, a survey there. Love to have people's input on it.
Great, anybody else?
Is there an, uh, is there an update on the, uh, status of the, um, stenographer to take notes and?
I understand that the, uh, uh, town manager and finance director, uh, have been, uh, seeking. But haven't found anyone within their, uh, the, uh, the means. Of what they've allocated toward that work. So, ongoing.
Patrick, did anybody reach out to, uh, any of the teachers at the high school or? Grade schools who might be interested in some part-time work?
Um, not that I'm aware of. I think the, the H R director had been, uh, for a while, uh, but, uh. She's been away.
It, it's, I, I think, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a concern because, uh, I think, um. Obviously the, the Commonwealth recommends that these minutes be kept on a timely basis, but I think it's also important. Uh, for our deliberations with respect to, um, one thirty-three Essex to have. Uh, good minutes to understand, uh, and, and what, what has been said and, and, and. And particularly with the hydrology and hydrogeology. I mean, that was some, um. Comprehensive information that was presented and it, it may turn out to be helpful in our deliberation. So. Um, uh, hopefully we'll be successful on that front soon. So.
Absolutely agreed. We have, uh, several boards and committees, uh, that lack. Uh, transcription services right now, which is, uh, very alarming to me.
Right.
Uh, can I just jump in here and make a suggestion? Um, because I do this every day. We run transcripts through a transcription service. It, that for a dollar a minute and they turn around in twenty-four hours. So if you have an hour-long meeting, it's sixty bucks and it's, and you have it within twenty-four hours.
Let's chat tomorrow, Mr. Cole.
I thought you'd like that one.
Yeah, and that's a transcript? That's an actual transcript?
It's an actual, it's a actually, uh, uh, you know, Microsoft document. Like, Microsoft Word document, twenty-four hours.
You know, that would be easy to edit. Uh, you know, we wouldn't want our minutes to be transcripts. But with a transcript, it would go significantly faster than watching a YouTube video.
Which, yeah, and it's, it's very cost-effective. Um, and I'll, I can hook you up with the account, Patrick, and you, you literally send them the video. They want, they want the video version because they want to be able to identify the names. And they take it right off of what we're looking at right here. And record it off of that and they get everybody's name right and they get all the content right. And you get it back in twenty-four hours.
Yeah, the, the wrinkle to this, John, is the fact that. Uh, the Attorney General wants us to do minutes in a way that's not transcriptions. But they want us to have, uh, a. A listing of the discussion items and the votes. So there'd be a process that we'd have to go through to call. The, uh, all of the, the, I guess you'd say unessential. Uh, verbiage and discussion as part of the meeting. So, uh. There might be a fit, there might not be. It's worth, uh, submitting to, to, uh, the town manager. Uh, but we would have a wrinkle there to have to deal with.
Right, we, we do exactly the same thing. We use the transcript to create our minutes for the meetings. Um, for the other boards I'm on. So we don't, we use the transcript only as a backup. To, 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 as Marnie mentions, you just go through and you redline it. You know, with a magic marker or whatever and, and, and then call that to make your minutes. And it saves you a ton of time.
Yeah, it, for example, you know, I prepared the minutes for the March fifteenth minute meeting and it, it really took a considerable amount of time. But if I, if I had had a transcript, I could have done it in probably a third of the time.
Yeah, very fast.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, John, I think some of the members of your, your, your team might want to know who you're using too, so. Offline as well.
Okay, well, something has been accomplished at this meeting, if nothing else, so.
Uh, I'll, I'll share with everybody. It's, it's.
Okay.
Okay, great.
I don't want to be the AI.
What's that?
There's a, there's a service called Chorus AI that'll join your meeting and actually in real time transcribe it so that you have it very shortly after.
Yeah.
Several services.
I don't want to be the skunk at the garden party, but I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn.
Oh, you're not a skunk.